Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 1st, 2021 Legislative Session of the Wycomico County Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can join us if you wish. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. It is this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, give those that trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I don't...
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America. And in due republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to make mention that Councilman Bill McCain will be joining us remotely. So you may not see him, but you'll probably hear him in a few minutes. You see his picture up there for now. So Ms. Hurley, would you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Good evening, Council President, Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening. We have legislative minutes from May the 18th, 2021, closed work session minutes from May the 4th, 2021 pertaining to a personnel matter, and closed work session minutes from May the 4th, 2021 on a consult with legal counsel.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Got one motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. This time we've got several proclamations. And Mr. McCain, can you hear me, Mr. McCain?
You just signed. Can you hear me okay?
Okay, Mr. McCain is going to read the proclamation for the Wycomico County Rising Star winner. So you can begin when you please, Mr. McCain.
Is Chloe there?
Do we have Chloe here? Yes.
Maybe we can have her go to the podium.
Can you go to the podium, please? She's at the podium.
Okay. Hello, Chloe. Sorry to not be there in person today, but I want to read the proclamation for Chloe Imes, the 2021-2022 Wycomico County Rising Star Award winner. The proclamation reads, "Whereas new teachers who successfully completed their first year in Wycomico schools and are now in their second year were eligible for the Rising Star Award, which was established to recognize and support teachers who are excelling in their first year in the profession. And whereas Ms. Chloe Imes, a teacher at Pemberton Elementary School, was selected as a finalist for the Rising Star Award. And whereas after careful selection process, Ms. Chloe Imes was named the 2021-22 Wycomico County Rising Star Award winner for showing ingenuity and amazing service to her students and school. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the acting county executive congratulate Ms. Chloe Imes for being named the 2021-22 Wycomico County Rising Star Award winner. Done this day, first day of June 2021, is signed by the county executive and all the county council members. Chloe, congratulations." I do want to make a quick comment because I want to make a couple comments.
You don't have to.
Sorry, I don't know where to look. Can you see me?
He can't see you, but he can hear you.
Thank you for this honor again. I know there's so many deserving teachers, but thank you for choosing me. And I'm proud to be a teacher in Wycomico County and do my best as I can and strive and on, especially through this year. So thank you.
Thank you for being a teacher. Next up, we have Councilman Hastings doing a proclamation for Ms. Nadia Peterson. Is Ms. Peterson here?
So I get the great pleasure of introducing a Teacher of the Year proclamation for my good friend, Nadia. We were a former, we used to live right next to each other. And she now, she's actually at Northwestern, which is the school that I went to. And so I'm very proud to introduce this. And also, I'm glad you're taking time. I know you weren't able to make it to the ceremony, but Nadia also just had a baby. Laura Lee, is that?
Laura Lee.
Laura Lee. I never watched that show. So we have here Nadia Peterson, the 2021-2022 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist. Whereas Ms. Nadia Peterson, a first grade teacher at Northwestern Elementary School, was chosen amongst the outstanding educators to represent Northwestern Elementary for the 21-22 Wycomico Teacher of the Year semifinalists. And whereas after an extensive interview process of all the semifinalists to include public speaking challenge, Ms. Nadia Peterson scored among the top four amongst her peers and was named Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist. Whereas Ms. Nadia Peterson joins a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication, leadership and dedication to education of our children and for your wonderful professional achievement. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and Acting County Executive congratulate Ms. Peterson for being named the 2021-2022 Teacher of the Year finalist. Done this the first day of June. Acting County Executive and all of the county, well, actually, not all of the county council members, who we're actually going to mail it to you. Normally, we give this to you, but we're not going to today. So we will mail this to you, but we'll take the picture and then... And then we will invite you. Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you again. Again, I was not expecting to even go this far, being especially pregnant. I was talking to my principal and I said, "I'll just go as far as I can." And I have to tell the story of, we were in the hospital after I just gave birth and I was able to tune in live. And we got the shock factor, then Dr. Hanlon said my name. My husband and I just looked at each other like, "Oh, okay." So again, very honored and just so proud to be a teacher in this county.
And I might add, Ms. Imes and the rest of the proclamations winners, Mr. McCain isn't able to sign it, so that goes for all of the proclamations tonight. We have to wait until he signs it and then we'll get those to you. So thank you for being patient with us. Mr. Hastings?
I will also mention that Nadia Peterson, before being a Peterson, she was a Lawrence. And we have a lot of, behind that door over there, there's a lot of things that were signed by Bob Lawrence, who was her grandfather and longtime, longsay of the Wycomico County Council here. So thank you again.
Thank you.
The next one I have, this is even better. Ready? If I can top it. I got to say that I've known this person her entire life, and in fact, not just entire life, before she was even born. We used to hang out. She is a three-time Teacher of the Year and my twin sister, that is Stephanie McCoy. Whereas Ms. Stephanie McCoy, a CTE Interactive Media Teacher at Wycomico High School, was amongst the many outstanding educators to represent Wy High during the 2021, or the 2021-2022 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalists. Whereas in an extensive interview process, and she had to go through a whole lot of things, including public speaking and a whole bunch of other... You've done this how many times? Third, through his third round. Okay, making sure. I was just, she's been Teacher of the Year so many times, it seems like. And now therefore, Wycomico County, we, you join a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication to our education of our children, and professional achievement. Now therefore, Wycomico County Council, County Executive congratulates you officially and being named the 2021-2022 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist on this first day and signed by almost everybody. Anything you'd like to say?
I would like to say that my mom said I was a lady and let him go first when we were born. I say that I kicked him out because I was done. Just kidding. I had to say that. Thank you. I was not expecting also, like everybody else, to come this far. So definitely this year, I have never been more proud to be a teacher and represent teachers and just exactly what we've all been through this year is amazing. And when you can step back and look a year later from where we started a year ago, it is enough to just put me in awe. So I am proud of all of us. I'm proud of our county. I feel like we all went through a lot of growing pains together and in the end, we're actually, I believe, better off because of it. So thank you for this. I appreciate you. Thank you.
So next up, we have Ms. Kirsten Biddle. Ms. Kirsten Biddle, the 2021 and 2022 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist. Whereas Ms. Kirsten Biddle, a third grade teacher at East Salisbury Elementary School, was chosen amongst many outstanding educators to represent East Salisbury Elementary School as the 2021-2022 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalist. And whereas, as after an extensive interview process of the semifinalists to include a public speaking challenge, Ms. Kirsten Biddle scored in the top four amongst her peers and was named a Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist. And whereas, Ms. Kirsten Biddle joins a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication to the education of our children, and professional achievement. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive congratulate Ms. Kirsten Biddle for being named 2021 and 2022 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist. Done this first day of June 2021, signed by the Acting County Executive and all of the county council numbers except one. And we'll get that signed. So if you want.
Once again, thank you so much. It has been such an honor to stand by side by side with so many wonderful educators within this county and to be selected from East Salisbury to represent all the wonderful educators over at East Salisbury. This has just been such an honor. So yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Now Mr. Dustin Thomas. I guess this is the big one. Mr. Dustin Thomas, the 2021-2022 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year. Whereas Mr. Dustin Thomas, a teacher of physical education, health, and world music at Prince Street Elementary School, was named the 2021 and 2022 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year. And will represent Wycomico County Schools in Maryland for the Maryland Teacher of the Year recognition program. And whereas Mr. Dustin Thomas has been a physical education teacher in Wycomico County since 2011 and has received numerous awards to include McEducator Award, and you're going to have to explain that one, and Wycomico County Schools Extra Mile Award. He has been recognized as the Elementary Wellness Coordinator of the Year and Hertrix Cash Per Class Community Choice Winner. Does that mean you get a car? Whereas Mr. Dunn, Mr. Dustin Thomas, coaches nothing but net and volunteers at community benefits, is the founder of Rhythm and Roots, the creator of a world music class, and has been recognized by local, state, and national organizations for his creativeness, innovation, and effectiveness in the classroom and beyond. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive congratulate Mr. Dustin Thomas for being named the 2021-2022 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year. Done this first day of June 2021 and signed by the Acting County Executive as well as all of the council numbers. And congratulations.
You're welcome to say something. Sure. Council members, thank you so much for having us and the rest of the educators that are here. It's an honor to share the podium with you all. And I'd like to thank Dr. Hanlon for your leadership and the rest of the board members, my admin for being here to support me throughout this whole thing, because I ask for a lot, y'all, and they never, never turn me down. They always support me. So it's nice having them in my corner. So thank you all. Have a good night.
Congratulations. Looks like a good turnout from the Board of Ed and a lot of staff members. So thank you all for attending to support our Teachers of the Year. Now Mr. Cannon, and now we need Mr. Peacock.
I would, Calvin, I would say we've saved the best for last, but we've got the entire Board of Education here, as well as like quite a lot of teachers, so we're outnumbered. So we'll leave that where it is. But I must say, personally, it's been a real pleasure serving with you on the Airport Commission. You've done an excellent job. I, not only do we do a lot of great work, but we, I enjoyed it and we had a good time doing that. And the airport for Wycomico County is such an important jewel for Wycomico County and for economic development throughout the Eastern Shore. And you spearheaded a lot of that. So we have a proclamation for you. If I, if you'd done less things, it would be larger print and I wouldn't have to read my glasses. It reads as such. "It is with great pleasure that the Acting County Executive and members of the Wycomico County Council extend this certificate of appreciation to Calvin Peacock for your professional commitment and steadfast dedication to the Airport Commission. From your initial appointment to the Airport Commission in August of 2015, your appointment as Chair of the Airport Commission in February of 2019, to your retirement in May of 2021, you worked hard to ensure that the best decisions were made for the airport. Showing professionalism in all you did, you committed countless hours to the Airport Commission and supported the airport's growth. You are a true public servant and your service will always be greatly appreciated. The Acting County Executive and Wycomico County Council join with the citizens of Wycomico County to extend gratitude for your outstanding service and achievement. Done this first day of June 2021, signed by the Acting County Executive and members
I'm not as good as the teachers, so I had to write mine down. By the way, I do want to say one thing to the teachers. You have always had my support because years ago, during a rough time at US Air, I decided to try taking on substitute teachers.
Yeah, if you want to pass into her.
While I understand it was a small part, I came home and the county is going to, the county council is going to love to hear that. I told my wife, I said, "If they want to raise my property taxes to raise your salaries, It's been an honor and a privilege to have served the citizens of Wycomico County on the Wycomico County Airport Commission. I would like to express my thanks to John Hall, who originally encouraged me to become a part of the Airport Commission, to all of the commissioners who have been supportive of the regional airport, the Wycomico County Executive leadership, who has recognized the value of the airport to the community and have worked hard to make that value real to the community, and to the Wycomico County Council in supporting the developmental programs that will bring businesses and jobs to the airport, to the excellent leadership and management of the airport staff, but most of all, I thank my wife, who has been very patient, understanding, and supportive with the time commitment this responsibility has required. In the past six years, the Airport Commission has either been a part of or led programs and events that has brought aviation to the forefront of the community, high schools, and universities. Aviation education is key to attracting higher-paying jobs that aviation businesses can bring to this area so that Salisbury Regional Airport will realize its full potential as a major economic driver of the Delmarva Peninsula."
Ms. Harley?
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on Resolution Number 57-2021. This is recommending for approval the sale of a land preservation easement from Gary Breeding on property located on the Westerly side of Pokemoke Road on Tax Map 58, Grid 17, Parcel 110, consisting of 150.49 acres, and property located southeast of Fruitland on the Westerly side of Pokemoke Road on Tax Map 58, Grid 23, Parcel 111, consisting of 58.84 acres. Council did hold a work session on this request on May the 4th, and we have Mr. Brian Soper here, Planning Manager with the Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
All right, this time, going to open the floor for a public hearing for Resolution Number 57-2021. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this resolution? Do we have anyone that wants to make a public comment? Okay, this time, we're going to close the floor for public comments. I need a motion to approve Resolution Number 57-2021?
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 57-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 57-2021 passes unanimously.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 58-2021. This is recommending the approval for the sale of a land preservation easement from Scrimminger Farm All LLC on property located northwest of Pittsville on both sides of Pittsville Road on Tax Map 31, Grid 6, Parcel 139, consisting of 108.44 acres. And Council also held a work session on this request on May the 4th, and Mr. Soper is here for this request as well.
All right, this time, we're going to open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 58-2021. Do we have any comments on Resolution Number 58-2021? Any comments from the floor? Okay, this time, we're going to close the floor. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 58-2021?
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 58-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. McCain? Okay, I don't hear Mr. McCain. Any...
Aye.
Aye, okay, good. Any opposed, please say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 58-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 59-2021. Declaring that SBY Development Group LLC is eligible to receive Maryland State Enterprise Zone benefits for property located at 229 West Main Street, Salisbury, Maryland, 21801. In order for a business to qualify for enterprise zone benefits, it must meet one of the two specific statutory requirements, which are that the business must either make an investment in capital improvements, more than $50,000, or hire new employees since it's been located in the zone. SBY Development Group LLC is eligible for the enterprise zone benefits because of its investment of more than $50,000 in the property. And we have Laura Soper here, the Enterprise Zone Coordinator with the city of Salisbury, if there are any questions.
All right, need a motion to approve Resolution Number 59-2021?
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 59-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. McCain?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 59-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Next item for business is Resolution Number 60-2021, authorizing the Acting County Executive to accept a revised grant agreement from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development through the Community Development Block Rent Program for the repurposing of grants CDBG CV-112 and CDBG CV-216. Approved by Resolution Number 54-2020 in the amount of $1,177,120 in CDBG funds and by Resolution Number 98-2020 in the amount of $1,076,932.80 in CDBG funds to serve low-to-moderating income families in Wycomico County. And we have Mr. Jesse Reed here, or Jesse Drew, I'm sorry, Planner 2 for the Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 60-2021?
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 60-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. McCain? Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed, please say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 60-2021 passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Harley.
Next is Resolution Number 61-2021, authorizing the Acting County Executive to accept a grant award from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention titled Police Recruitment and Retention, fiscal year 2022, in the amount of $116,400. This grant funding is to be used to recruit police officers and to retain them by offering $25 towards a gym membership, $100 a year shoe allowance, and provide $1,000 bonus to the officers that have been employed over three years. And we have Lieutenant Rich Wiersberg here from the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
All right, need a motion to approve Resolution Number 61-2021?
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 61-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. McCain?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 61-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 62-2021. This is approving a priority letter for the Maryland Department of Transportation's fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2027 Consolidated Transportation Program. Council had a work session on this request on May the 18th, and I believe we have Mr. Mark Whitelock here, Deputy Director of Public Works, and Mr. Tony Rudy, Airport Manager, if there are any questions.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 62-2021?
So moved.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 62-2021, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 62-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Next is a submission of an appointment to the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance. The Acting County Executive has submitted, in accordance with Charter Section 315, an appointment to the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance. The Workforce Alliance is a division of the Tri-County Council for the Lower Eastern Shore of Maryland. The organization provides policy and oversight for Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funds and programs. Resolution Number 63-2021 is confirming the appointment of Roger L. Martenson to the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 63-2021?
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 63-2021, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed, please say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 63-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Next item for business is Resolution Number 64-2021. This is approving the Capital Improvement Program for Wycomico County for fiscal years 2022 through 2026. And we have Mrs. Pam Owen here, Director of Finance, if there are any questions.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 64-2021?
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the CIP on the Conley Mill project. I believe it's page 10. Under the Conley Mill Master Plan and the Conley Mill Phase 1, there's mention of the sale of the West Metro property would be used to, would be used to purchase this or to develop this. And so I'd like to make a motion that we strike those last two lines, keeping it intact that the, that project of Conley Mill still exists, but just the funds will be taken from West Metro.
Ms. Ackley has made a motion to strike the sale of the West Metro park. Do we have a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Got a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Could you clarify again what page it's on?
I believe it's page 10, but it's cut off at the bottom, so I'm not...
Page 19.
Page 19, right. I guess the question would be, it does... I guess the question would be, it does state that the county share of the funding could come from the potential sale of the West Metro Core property, and I also agree, I'm not quite convinced, and I don't think the council's come to the conclusion yet, that we want to actually see that happen. We're not so sure whether we're going to abandon the West Core property just yet. I don't...I don't think it really changes the dynamics of the capital improvement plan in itself, because again, it is a plan. It's not like the budget where it'll commit the funding. So just to put that out there.
Well, my concern though is that we haven't...we have a work session scheduled to review this West Metro, and so I don't want to have this in the CIP with the assumption that's going to happen.
All right, any more discussion?
Councilman Dodd, I have a comment.
Yes, Mr. McCain.
My only concern is any funding that might become available for that project, if it's cut, you know, then funding becomes available and it's not in our CIP, that can be an issue. I'd be curious too, does Ms. Olin have any...have any comments regarding the proposal?
Well, it's not...
Ms. Holloway?
It's not even in the master plan right now, West Metro isn't, so I don't know what kind of funding would be coming available. I guess we'd have to apply for it, right?
And I think the intent of the motion is to make sure that property isn't sold.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Again, again, in looking at the...in looking at the actual CIP, the only commitment is $100,000 to fiscal year 2022. The commitment of the Conley...the master plan is fiscal year 2022 is $100,000. Phase 1, I guess, of actually developing Conley Mill isn't projected until '24, which is several years away. My question would be, if the West Metro Core, and this would be for the executive branch or for the finance or for Mr. Miller, if the council were to choose not to approve the transfer of the West Metro Core property through the open...project open space, would that mean that the master plan would no longer be something that we would be approving the funding for, the $100,000? Whoever wants to...
John Posoda, Acton County Executive. So on the...to that question, we would have to come back to council if that $100,000 wasn't available, either through the transfer of the property or sale of the property. And again, we're not...we're not saying that we're going to sell the...sell the property. We're looking at a simple transfer of the project open space restriction from one to the other, then that $300,000 approximately would go over to that, and we could utilize that for the master plan study. Without that, then we would have to come back here for approval.
All right, Ms. Holloway?
Well, I think when that time comes, they could come back if they wanted to, yeah.
Cross that bridge when we get there.
That's correct.
All right, Mr. Hastings?
I'd say, first of all, that's...the process is not fully clear in my mind. I definitely agree there needs to be...we need to have a west side park, and I think that was the original intent with that space, was that it would be that...that being said, I don't...also don't want to lose an opportunity or further hinder any kind of opportunity to do what I think was also very helpful, that the Conley Mill space is a very important space, so I don't know that I really have any real question attached to this, but I do...but I want to make sure that we're going about it in the right process, and I think I might have to hear the motion again to understand what exactly we would be doing.
And again, to Councilman Cannon's point, this is a planning document, and so if you can keep that in mind as well.
Ms. Ackley, the motion?
The motion was to strike the last three lines on the Conley Mill Master Plan on the CIP, starting with the county sheriff funding.
If I could...
Ms...Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, I second it for a reason, but I think if we were to strike it and then we were to decide to do it, and our up...it is reversed, this is all backwards, but I think in the...in the fact that I think, you know, Mr. Miller does try to move things forward as quickly as he can, and I think this came about last minute, but my point being, if we were to strike these words, Councilman Ackley, then to a certain degree, I don't know if we couldn't do the project, but having struck those three words from the...from the CIP, it may create a problem as to whether the funding was ever approved in the CIP. So if in our work session, we then wanted to...made the decision to do it, we'd have to go back and, I would assume, we'd have to go back and amend the CIP. Whereas if we leave it the way it is now, we can make whatever decision we want in the work session, and the CIP would just have to abide by whatever we did.
And my motion was just to strike the last three, that said that the funding could come from the potential sale of the West Metro Core, funds accumulated from years of farming on that land. That was, I mean, I don't...I'm not taking anything from the Conley Mill Master Plan or the Conley Mill Phase 1.
In the way I look at it, that park was purchased through program open space about 10 years ago because the residents on that side of the county need a park, and we've been 10 years without building a park down there, and I've been getting phone calls from people in that area that would like to see a park, so if we sell that park, then they'll never get a park.
I'd be inclined to keep it in. I certainly understand why you made the motion. I would be inclined to keep it in just simply because of the fact it does not hold the county or the council to those expenses or to that plan as a whole. It's just saying that we agree the fact that they're going to look into that possibility, the fact that they use the term that they could do it, not that they would do it.
But you made a motion to second her.
I second it for discussion, sure, but I'm just saying, I'm just giving my formal opinion on it.
Any more discussion, Mr. Hastings?
Yeah, I'd basically just say the same, kind of the same thing. I think the could...I don't want to set us up for an issue where we could have to further complicate things, and I know that we're coming out of order a slight bit, but yeah. So I think...I think the fact that it says the funding...the share of the funding could come from, that makes me feel a little bit better as opposed to will fund or anything like that, but I guess in general, the merit of what we're discussing is highly important, is that, which we can, I guess, take it the next...the next time we actually do discuss this, but the...
But supporting the amendment makes it clear. If we don't...if you don't support the amendment, it leaves, you know, the question out there of what is going to happen. If we support the amendment, it clear...makes it completely clear, and it's very clear that they can come back, the executive...the executive's office can come back, so it's kind of like it's in limbo if...
I have strong feelings on that.
Well, we got a motion and a second on the floor, Ms. Hurley.
I just want to clarify the motion because that language that you're referring to is also in the Conley Mill Phase 1, so is your motion to strike it from the Conley Mill Master Plan as well as Conley Mill Phase 1?
Yes, it would be the last sentence in the Conley Mill Phase 1, starting with the county sheriff.
It's in two sections of the CIP. I think that's what she's looking for.
Right, right. Thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Hurley.
Want to change the amendment or the...or before the clarifying?
Change the amendment, Ms. Ackley, for both sections.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the CIP in both sections, Conley Mill Master Plan, the last four sentences, starting with proposed funding, and then the Conley Mill Phase 1, the last sentence, starting with the county sheriff.
Ms. Cannon, does your second still stand?
I'll keep the second, yes.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, did I hear four ayes?
Yeah.
Okay, so it passes. All right. Now, back to the CIP. Any more discussion on the CIP? Any more discussion on the CIP? Ms. Hurley, we did make a motion on the original intent, didn't we? On Resolution 64-2021. All right, need a motion? Got a motion? All in favor of Resolution Number 64-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, but passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McCain. Thank you, everyone. Ms. Hurley.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 65-2020...2021, approving the schedule of fees and charges provided by the Wacomiko County Department of Public Works Solid Waste Division, increasing tipping fees and establishing a neat...new fee for a second household landfill permit. And we have Mr. Mark Whitelock here, Deputy Director of Public Works, if there are any questions.
Okay, I need a motion to approve Resolution Number 65-2021.
To move.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion?
Question.
Mr. Davis?
The new fee for a second household landfill permit, that's for if you got two cars, you got to pay for the second permit?
How are you? Mark Whitelock, Deputy Director of Public Works, yes, so the second sticker would be $30.
All right, does that answer your question, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, that's per one registered address, correct? Yeah.
All right, Ms. Holloway?
Well, I'm not going to support this. I tell you, it's not the time to be raising fees on the taxpayers. I understand the argument of needing more money right now for the landfill. There's also another issue that if we get our tipping fee too high, we could end up like Worcester County and lose one of our biggest contributors to the landfill. You move in that direction, that could be a problem. If we lost that, that would really throw the landfill finances into a tailspin. The other thing, the third thing, I guess, is, you know, we've had a lot of problems already with trash along the roads. I know it may be getting better. If we get the inmates back out there soon, hopefully, that'll work, but I think this year's the wrong year to be raising the...raising the fees. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of Resolution Number 65-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
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 Nay, how many nays do we have?
Don't know how many ayes you have.
Yeah, I'm going to do a roll call. Ms. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Hastings?
Aye.
Ms. Ackley?
Nay.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Holloway?
Nay.
Mr. McCain?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it, chair votes nay. I don't think it's a good time I agree with Mr. Holloway, so the ayes have it. Ms. Hurley?
Next is Resolution Number 68-2021. This is authorizing BeneVate Inc. doing business as neighborly software as a sole source vendor for the purchase and installation of neighborly software products for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program and to weigh the formal competitive bidding process for the purchase and installation of said neighborly software products during the fiscal years 2021 and 2022. We have Mr. Jesse Drewer, Planner 2, and Mr. Nick Rice, purchasing agent, here, if there are any questions.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 68-2021. Need a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Got a question.
Mr. Davis?
Seems like everything is brought under sole source vending. We haven't had anything in the last couple of years, anything that's bid it out, and the problem I have with that is, you might know who these people are, but we're approving stuff, we don't even know who you use, the people you...that you said that other things can be brought up against, we don't know nothing. All we got is one person that's doing the project. We don't know if there's anybody else out there, what the call says, or nothing.
Mr. Rice? Mr. Drewer and Mr. Rice.
Good afternoon, Nicholas Rice, purchasing agent.
Jesse Drewer, Planner 2.
Thank you. To answer the first part of your question, we do bids all the time. They don't come before the county council because they're not required to, so the only time you see these are when they are sole sources. So yes, we do bids all the time.
So why don't we see this as a bid?
Well, I'll let...I'll let Jesse talk about the process that he went through and how they came to the conclusion of this vendor.
When we looked at this software and other software for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, we evaluated four different ones that were recommended by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and for the cost...the cost and the timeframe for implementation, this company was selected, along with four other counties who are doing the same thing this month that we are, bringing this software online, and it was the cheapest that we found by a significant cost factor of $50,000 to the next available software. This was only $29,000 for a one-year timeframe for this.
Well, if you bid it, why didn't you bring that information also, instead of just doing a sole source? I mean, you're saying you bid it now, and you...
No, it wasn't...it was not formally bid. They said they evaluated companies based on the state's recommendations.
Yep. So this was just a sole source bid, there was no bidding at all?
It was not a formal bid, no.
Okay.
It was not.
So why don't we see that information? Before you bring it to us and want us to approve something, we don't know nothing about. We understand that you guys know what you're doing, but it'd be nice if we knew what the process and the other people that was in this.
Yeah, I mean, we can...I'm sure we can definitely get you the information of the other companies and the valuation process that Jesse and his staff went through.
It'd be nice to have it before we approve it. I mean, you're here now for us to prove it. I mean, it'd be nice to get this stuff beforehand so we can view it before then.
We can certainly bring that to you at a later date. You know, we...the information that's provided, you know, that we said, basically, the software, and it's used by the other...four other counties, and, you know, as Jesse said, you know, time is of the essence on stuff like this, which is why, if we can come to a conclusion without doing a formalized bid, which does take time, there are times as this that we believe warrant a sole source process.
Ms. Holloway?
Well, you know, what Mr. Davis just asked, I've asked several times, and you know that you're going to be asked these questions every time you come up here, and you come up with sole source projects, you know, and you get asked the same question and we get the same answers. I don't know why you don't do the background work before you come. It doesn't make sense.
Well, it was done. It's just that exactly what information depends on what type of procurement we're doing. Nine times out of 10, when I come to you for a sole source, it's because it's the only vendor that does it, or it's the only vendor that we know does it. So I don't know exactly what information would satisfy you if I said I did X amount of hours Googling these types of companies, you know. So yes, this is one where there wasn't evaluation done. That's usually not the case with a sole source, because the reason for the sole source is they're the only vendor we know of, they're the only vendor that does exactly what we're trying to do. So yes, it is possible to take this route when it's in the best interest, and you want...did you want to...
The only thing I had was that this was recommended by the Department of Housing and Community Development, and because of the timeframe for this, this software does...would have a four-week turnaround time for implementing it, and our program did open today. So it would just be, the overall thought process for the software was it's also safer for the applications rather than having applications dropped off here and done in paper. This can all be done online for the people applying, and all the documents are kept secure that way.
So you say it was recommended by HUD, but then you said there are only four counties using it. What about the other 19 counties?
They did not receive as large grant awards that we did, that it would be cost effective, where we got $7 billion. All the neighboring counties together, what Somerset County was $1 million, Worcester County was $2 million, we received the largest allocation on the eastern shore.
Okay. Mr. Cannon?
It may be a good thing that it came before the council. My concern, over and above the, you know, looking for just, you know, one vendor, period. My concern is the fact that you're talking about spending $29,000 on a software program for a COVID-related distribution of funds, and we're pretty much through the COVID relation. We just had a Resolution 61-2021. Can you hear me when this goes in and out? Do you know?
I can, but if you sit back...
I can't. Do I need to keep this pushed in?
That turned off.
We cut it off and we don't want to hear you.
Okay. My concern really is the fact that in Resolution 61-2021, we just repurposed a large majority of that funding away from the Rental Assistance Program to a myriad of other programs through Deaconia and everyone else, so I'm not sure why we're considering spending the $29,000 for a Rental Assistance Program.
assistance program, it's only a temporary program.
This would be just funded through the seven million dollar grant, because the, the lifetime for this grant is expenditure of September of twenty twenty two, so we still have approximately fifteen to seventeen months of timeframe for this grant, and we just started in current costs just today, so it's only just beginning as of June first.
So, is this software gonna be used by the vendors who are processing?
Yes.
It's not gonna be used by the county, it's gonna be used by the vendors?
We would be using it for the reporting, uh, side of it, that it would be automatically reports automatically generated for the state, but all of the vendors that we are partnering with will input the data directly into it, and applicants can go right on the county website if approved and put in all their information, that's more accessibility also, it checks a box for the state that we have to at least offer it in an online method.
So does this, is this part of their, their management fee with the grant, I mean, is this?
No, the company isn't affiliated with the state, it's just one of several that they've recommended that we look into, and this was the one that we found that would be the best.
When you give the vendors, when you allocate this money to the vendors, to Dia Canea or whoever, you give them a management fee for administering these grants?
They got, uh, staffing, uh, staffing allotment, they didn't receive direct money, it's staffing time is all, is all reimbursement for staffing time.
Okay, so then, is, is that built into the cost of this program?
No, this comes from a separate county, uh, allotment that we received.
But you see what I'm saying, you're paying for staffing fees, and you're paying for the program.
This would alleviate, this would alleviate more of our administrative fund that would have to go towards covering staff time, it would cut staffing time in half essentially, so we could essentially repurpose some of the staffing money for other things later on, as, it takes four hours to review an application, the software can make it one and a half to two hours, we can repurpose some of that staffing money for other purposes.
I don't understand how it takes four hours or even an hour and a half to review an application on this, I just don't-
And for each one of these rental applications, it's just the time involved with filing up, because numerous people do not submit driver's license, social security cards, leases, it's spent, we spend a lot of time following back up with each one of these, making copies of it, ensuring everything is signed is one of the hardest things that we found.
Tell them it's gotta be done right, it's not your responsibility to chase them down, you know, if they want free money, they want free rent, you know, that's-
So i- if they go online to fill out an application, but yet they don't submit a driver's license or a lease agreement, who follows up on that?
Right now, the staffing does, and as the process is, it's on paper, so we don't know it until it gets there, enabling the software, they would not be able to proceed to the next step without including an attachment of a driver's license, an attachment of the lease and so forth, they wouldn't be able to, it would not get to the level that it's gone through three different people until they complete it correctly.
So it sounds like they're gonna spend an hour and a half, two hours, on the computer, and then you're gonna have to spend more time going after them?
The computer won't allow them to get it to us essentially, so when we get it, it's all the information's already there, we can flip through, do our checklist.
How do you handle it when they don't have a computer, and they don't have those capabilities?
We will still be using the paper applications as we have been, but this just enables it for more security too, for documents.
All right, any more comments?
I'd only say again, it appears to me that millions of dollars that was originally allotted has been repurposed.
Those monies, just that was state-funded, this grant is with federal from, from HUD funding, so they're two separate funding sources, the other was CDBG funds, which is directly state, and that has a, that has a much stricter, uh, requirement for spending and what we can do with those funds, so that's why we had to repurpose them for certain requirements, uh, certain national objectives, this funding is directly from the state, so we're not subjected to certain requirements, what we can do with it, we can contact our state directly.
Is this funding, um, being made available for future, um, folks that need help, or from-
Yes, this, this funding allows for three months of future rent and going forward, and then through this program, it would allow us to keep track of that and-
We're pretty much through COVID, I mean, I'm wondering, of course, it's not our decision about the funding, I guess it's been given, but anyway.
So what, what good is the program after, um, what good is the software after the program's done in a year and a half, or whatever it takes?
We're looking at it for a one-year, for a one-year timeframe, and by that time, we would be June of next year, and we would stop it at that point, because the grant ends in September of twenty twenty two.
So we're basically approving twenty nine thousand for a one-year-
Yep.
-software lease, okay, any more discussion? Mr. Hastings?
Well, I'll just say once again, this is for emergency rental assistance program, correct, you know, this is a, obviously a good intent for the work that's there, uh, as far as this particular, uh, situation, I appreciate all that you and staff and others are doing to, to help make that happen, uh, as far as the process itself, you know, would be, I can certainly speak with the council as far as getting the, the competitive bidding, that's always good to have as much information as possible, I think a lot of us around the table like to go and do our own Google searches and find out, and see if we have the most amount of information, but the fact that this is, uh, comes through the state of Maryland as a trusted source, and, uh, and is the lowest by our, amends part, so thank you.
I just have one last question, how many citizens applied for the rental assistance through the state program?
Through the first round, we were in excess of five hundred, between the two, the two different grant fundings.
That's how many applied, or that's how many got approved?
That's how many got approved, applied, we applied was in excess of eight hundred, and it was five hundred, it was, I believe, a five hundred and twelve or five hundred thirteen that we paid for, and we're working on approving, at the end of this month, our final report will be due, clearing all of those files.
So how many more do you anticipate applying for it?
We are expecting twenty five hundred with this grant fund, that was, that's the target number for this grant that runs through September, is twenty five hundred households is expected.
See, that's, again, that's what confuses me, because we've already repurposed, uh, the state funding.
The, that funding was different, whereas it was tied to three months and nine months maximum, you had to have lease, you had to have specific COVID reasoning, this is very open-ended in regards to, uh, you could be childcare is now an excuse, if you're, if you're a temp employee, or if you're a sole proprietor, this funding allows you to help, we can pay future rent, down, down payments for getting someone out of an old apartment into a new place, so this fund is a lot more broad than the previous ones were.
And who were the other three vendors?
The partners for the, for the emergency rental assistance are Shore Up.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear on that, who are the, you said there were four vendors, uh, four vendors that have the software?
Yes.
Who were the other three?
It was Neighbor Max and, what was the, uh, Penelope, and then it was Penelope Max, they were the three softwares that we evaluated, and the Neighbor Mac, the Neighbor Works was one that was recommended by one of our partners, Salisbury Hereford Housing, that uses it for down payment assistance, but that requires a one hundred thousand dollar a year annual subscription at, with a five-year minimum contract, most of them required a annual contract that could not be negotiated, this one was evaluated as a, on a year-for-year basis, so.
I'd make a motion that we postpone this, uh, to allow for a work session, to actually get a, a better idea of what the, where the program is, where the county is with the funding, and exactly how we're gonna execute it, and what responsibilities we have in the future here, and over the next month or two.
I'll second that one.
We have a motion and a second to postpone this until we have a work session, any discussion? All in favor of the amendment, uh, or postponing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, Chair votes aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did have one nay.
We did have one nay.
McCain said nay, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I didn't hear that.
For the record.
Ms. Hurley?
I'm Mr. Wilbur. All right, this is second reading of the Annual Budget and Appropriation Bill, uh, consisting of the operating capital budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty two, the governmental and enterprise fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty two, the anticipated grant funding budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty two, FY twenty two position changes budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty two, FY twenty two proposed capital budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty two, and to appropriate funds for all expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty one, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty two.
Right, uh, need a motion to approve legislative bill twenty twenty one dash oh one.
To move.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I don't know if there needs to be any correction, uh, with the CIP as well, I guess not, um, in reference to what, uh, Council one, Ackley had said before, she just left the room, so, um, I thought I would throw that out there, but she's, all right, not here, so.
Bring that back up.
Again, the CIP is a plan.
We'll wait till, Mr. Holloway?
Well, this is, you know, we're talking about, um, you know, the budget, so let's wait until Ms. Ackley gets back out here.
Mr.?
Can I just comment on that question real quick, um, I believe, Mr. Wilbur, you can correct me, she was just amending the tax in the CIP, I don't think she was amending any of the dollar amounts.
Right.
That's my understanding.
Yes, it would not impact the budget as far as the dollar amount.
Okay, um, I, the only reason I said it, because I believe there's a hundred thousand dollar notation in the capital bud, in the, um, in the operating budget, in one of the exhibits, I believe it's in there, uh, commitment for the master plan.
Mr. Cannon, did you have a question?
Well, I guess maybe, um, either through Pam or Steve or, uh, or John, uh, if we could get any clarification on this hundred thousand dollar commitment for the master plan.
I'm Olin, Finance Director, so, if I understood the amendment correctly, in the CIP, the tax changed, no dollar amounts changed, thus, the budget does not need to change, because the budget still has the dollars in it that are represented in the CIP, so the, the check, the tax change does not impact the budget.
Uh.
As the budget has it in as a other source, and depending on council's consideration, it would depend on what that other source could be as, um, for funding purposes, so no change from the CIP change impacts the budget.
Any more comments, questions?
On the budget?
Yes.
As a whole, not just this subject, um, we were talking about, um-
Use the mic.
Sorry about that, we were talking about the monies that we were going, the executives wanted to move to the contingency, where do we stand on that, um, I'm, I have an issue with that, I don't think I agree with that, department, department-wise contingencies.
Agree.
I would make a motion that we strike the, uh, the contingency from the elections category of two hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars, and we strike the, uh, that's, that would be my motion, from the elections.
Um, have a motion to strike the contingency stated in the elections line item.
What were the other ones, what other departments were there?
Ms. Hurley, do you have the other departments with the contingency, the separate contingency?
Um, I believe Mr. Hitchens actually emailed that out to all the council members.
Did somebody have that in front of them, I thought I saw that.
You're gonna give me just one moment?
I can tell you, if you want, the county council had six thousand six hundred and seventy, the executive branch had thirteen thousand, community promotions had seven thousand five hundred, elections had two hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty-three, volunteer ambulance had nine hundred and sixty thousand, and tri-county council had one hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars, the contingency reserve was one million.
Was that, was that the proposed from the executive's office, that was, everything was gonna be put in contingency, or is that, I thought that was just departments, operating departments in the county we were talking about?
Those were the departments, yeah, those were the departments, county, county council, executive promotions, elections, voluntary ambulance, and tri-county council.
Of which the elections, ambulance, and tri-county council were the new items.
Okay, so what does, what does anybody wanna do with that, do they wanna leave those alone, or make a motion to move them to contend, uh, the regular contingency, or what, or you just wanna do one?
I had a motion to, to remove the, the elections.
Okay, how about the tri-county council?
Remove one, remove all.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, did you say something?
I said if we can remove one, we should remove them all, I don't understand why you have to put them in contingency, if they're gonna need to, I mean, you're, you're putting money there to say that down the line, that we're gonna need money for this department, if you know that, why don't you put it in the budget, and again, if you're gonna need the money anyway, when you come back to the council, we're gonna approve it, so I don't see why you're gonna put it in contingency.
I don't recall us ever, um-
Turning down anybody.
Turning down anybody, I really don't, you know, when the proof is there that it's needed, so, I would support that, are you making that as a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
We have one, one second, one second, on the elections, um, so let's vote on that then.
Well, we could amend my original motion, but I have a question for clarification, doesn't the county council and the executive branch, don't we fall under a different category if we were to eliminate the, um, contingency on those for ourselves and for the executive branch?
Um, the executive branch, I believe, has always had contingency in their budget, but the amount is being requested to be increased this year, so that line item has been there, uh, the county council is the same, are slightly increased as well, um, the reason for the county council contingency, I believe, is because the executive doesn't have any say over the legislative branch's budget, um, so that's why that contingency line item has been incorporated into the council office budget.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, um, there's already one motion on the floor for the elections, any more discussion on that?
The, in light of, uh, the recommendation to possibly amend this motion, I would want to try to get a clarification, if I could, from, uh, Mr. Pissoda, on the, um, on the volunteer ambulance with that nine hundred and sixty thousand, why that is considered, or from, uh, Ms. Olin, um, why that's been put in there, the nine sixty, there's a reason for that, right, I just, you know, off the top of my head, I can't remember, I've, I've reviewed it, but I can't remember it tonight.
Ms. Olin, can you come to the table, please?
She was hoping John did. She was looking at John, she was hoping he would.
Throw a paper in his head.
I guess he pulled rank on you.
I believe Ms. Olin still knows.
The nine, uh, the nine sixty was the fund, the additional funding with the American Rescue for the, uh, fire, the volunteers, and we put it all in just one line item, it's to be split between the volunteer, it's an additional eighty thousand dollars per volunteer organization, and so instead of mixing it into lines they already had, so that it didn't get confused in future years, we put it in the contingency line, so it was, uh, on its own and recognizable for what it was.
Right, so there, I, I thought you had a reason there, and I wouldn't wanna strike that, because I recognize the-
So it is accountable for?
Yes, it's intended to give eighty thousand dollars per volunteer under the American Rescue.
So why don't we do that anyway?
She just said she'd do it.
Why does it have to be in contingency?
I, again, I, I put it in a line item that existed in the budget in, but I did not want to put it in a line item that we have historically funded, so that it didn't look like we were going to roll it over in future years.
So, next year doesn't look like we're cutting their budget?
Correct, it's a specific line item.
Got it.
I think, I think what the concern here is about the contingency, if, if there's something out there that's earmarked, as, what you just stated, the fire department, I think we're fine with that, but for just a contingency where we don't know what the plans are, other than if they need it, you know, um, that's, I think that's where our issues are, right?
Yeah, voluntary ambulance, I think, was a special exception.
The three new ones this fiscal year were the, the volunteer fire company, the elections, and the tri-county council.
And could you refresh my memory on the tri-county council?
It was funding, um, we requested that they, uh, resubmit their budget, and they did come back with a lower number, and we split the difference between their original request and their lowered number, and put it in contingency to allow them, that if they had an emergency, it was already built into the budget, but they would have to come to administration for that emergency.
Was that, was that a hundred and thirty-five, um, did that end up leaving the two eighty-eight, one sixty-four?
I'm, I'm blanking on those numbers, I don't-
Well, we're seeing a dollar change, uh, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, um, for tri-county council, so, they were asking for another hundred and thirty-five thousand, so you took, you took that off the two eighty-eight, so that doesn't, that isn't in the two eighty-eight, correct?
We lowered the amount, so the total amount that they requested is lower, the amount that's in the budget is lower than their original request.
So, what was the- So, what was the purpose for the, for the extra funding? What was the reasons?
For, to, um, meet all of their requirements, to be able to, um, match all grants necessary to make capital purchases as well as their operating requests.
Okay.
Right. Mr. Hastings, did you have a-
See, if there's anything, why you're here, if you wanted to say anything about elections also.
Elections was that they have historically run under budget, but there is a lot of legislation that passed this year. And so, the unknown impact of that, we gave them their full request, but we split a portion of it out, so that they would have to, again, come through administration to be able to spend it. They couldn't just spend out of all of their categories without, um, some additional oversight versus putting it in specific line items meant they could spend it without any further oversight.
But going back to the administration does not go back to the council, so it's not something that would be addressed publicly.
Correct.
Yeah. I only, um, I made the motion for the 200 on the board of elections. That's the only one I felt a little uncomfortable with.
Okay. Any more discussion on that?
Where are we at right now? Would, would you want to vote on that motion and then-
There was a motion and a second on the elections. Is that correct?
Let's do that one first.
All in favor of, um, Mr. Cannon's amendment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Opposed, nay.
Got one opposed. Chair votes aye. All right, next discussion.
Okay, now, the 135 and the 288 for Tri-County Council. Do we want to do anything? Put the 135 in, in our, in contingency or leave it, leave it where the executive had it?
So, if we moved it out of their contingency and put it in general contingency?
That's correct.
They would have to come for the public.
Yeah. I make that motion to, um, to put that into general contingency.
The Tri-County Council, or the Tri-County Council's already, what they're being funded is less than what their original request was.
I know that, Bill, and what we're saying is just to put it in, put it in contingency, not put it in the general contingency. That's what we're saying, instead of putting in a departmental contingency.
I understand that, but it's not arbitrary. I mean, or, you know, they can't just, you know, the statement was made earlier, how they, you know, they're just going to, they're definitely going to spend that money. Well, no, they, I mean, they got to come to the administration. They can't just spend that money.
They don't have to come to the council.
I realize that, but, you know, but the, you know, the administration's already making that anticipation, to their credit, I mean, they're trying to plan and anticipate. So, I mean, that's why, you know, I have issues with just, you know, and they're already reduced. I mean, so it's like they're getting reduced. Just feel, I feel like they're, you know, they're getting reduced even more and have to go through another whole extra step.
We're not, we're not reducing them at all. We're just moving it into contingency.
I know, I realize that.
So, there's no talk of reduction?
Ms. Harley, if, if any of these funds are moved to the general contingency, can they be earmarked so that it can't be touched or spent on something else?
Well, first, it's, it's a recommendation. So, I mean, council cannot add to the general contingency fund without the acting county executive's permission. So, you're making a recommendation, and if the council and the acting county executive cannot agree, then the money would come out of the undesignated fund balance. As far as earmarking it, I believe Mrs. Olin could do that. No, she's telling me no.
I'll make a motion that we, or I've, I've already made that motion that we-
Can you repeat it, so?
I'll make the motion that we do the 135 to the general contingency.
There's a motion to do the 135 from the general contingency. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Okay. We're going to vote now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
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 One, two, three. Chair votes ayes. Four ayes have it. Is that, uh, any more discussion?
I, I would like to point out that administration has asked for several corrections to be made to the bill. I sent out council, um, a list of motions in order to make those corrections. You would want to make those motions and-
You have those-
Mrs. Olin would explain those if you would like.
You have those proposed amendments in front of us. Ms. Harley, can you read those?
Maybe what might make this move quicker is that if a council member made a motion, instead of just having Ms. Harley read all 10 of them and then make motions to read all 10 of them again, if we could read each one and make, and get it seconded and vote on it and discuss it at the same time?
We can do that, but I kind of wanted some transparency, so the public could know what the amendments would be.
We're going to read each one.
Okay. Who's going to read it?
Oh, I guess I'll start. If you want to make a motion to amend Exhibit A titled "General Fund Balance Revenue", the request of the county executive is follows. Increase the use of prior year fund balance to $4,213,774. Ms. Harley, I have to defer to you on this one. Would this be one motion to include all four items here?
Yes, it would.
Okay. The second portion of that motion would be to increase America, the American Rescue Plan revenue to $4,384,368, to increase the total miscellaneous revenues to $9,126,838, and to increase the total general revenue refund to $161,692,578. I think for the public's, that's a motion.
Yeah, it's got a motion to amend Exhibit A titled "General Fund Revenue". Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think for public to understand, these are adjustments that were made to the budget just to reflect, uh, CARES funding, et cetera.
Yes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, so Exhibit A is passed. Mr. McCain? Mr. McCain?
He said aye.
He said aye. Thank you very much.
Motion to amend Exhibit B titled "General Fund Expenses", at the request of the county executive is follows. Fund 20 Volunteer Fire, Part A, increase fiscal year '22 operating expenses to $2,117,635. Part B, to increase fiscal year '22 total for volunteer fire to $2,230,44.
This was a typo correction, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion for Exhibit B. Do we have a second?
You want to create them all together?
Continue on with Exhibit B, the motion to amend Exhibit B for those, all those funds.
You lost me. Oh, you, oh, you're saying to go through the whole list? Okay.
For all those funds.
All right, to continue the motion, uh, to amend, uh, to, to amend Fund 21, make corrections-
Corrections.
Fund 21, to increase the fiscal year '22 salaries to $8,582,904. Increase the fiscal year '22 benefits to $4,105,120. And increase the fiscal year '22 total for corrections to $18,635,612. Under Fund 22 Emergency Services, increase the fiscal year '22 salaries to $1,610,577. Increase fiscal year '22 benefits to $716,704. And increase the fiscal year '22 total for emergency services to $3,654,668. And to amend Fund 50 in Roads, to increase fiscal year '22 salaries to $2,199,428. Increase the fiscal year '22 benefits to $1,350,284. And increase fiscal year '22 total for Roads to 1, 11 million, excuse me, $11,731,782. The increase total general fund to $161,692,572.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Cannon to amend Exhibit B 1 through 5. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. McCain? Okay, chair votes aye. That amendment passes, Ms. Harley. Now, moving on, do it.
We have some more motions.
Okay.
They're on the second page. If someone wants to make that motion.
Josh, it's your turn.
Your turn, Jason.
I'd like to make a motion to amend fiscal year 2022 capital budget at the request of the county executive to increase the project total to $49,629,289 to include bond contingency amount of $400,000.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Hastings. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. McCain. Do you have another amendment, Ms. Harley? Is that one motion?
I'll make one more motion.
Yes, go ahead, please.
I have the motion to amend Section 4 of Legislative Bill 2021-01 to add Exhibit F titled "Waicomico County Position Control Document" to be used as a baseline for all of the, all positions currently funded in the budget prior to any position changes. Section 4 now reads as follows. Fiscal year 2022 position changes, budget and position control budget are attached heretofore as Waicomico County 2022 Position Changes Budget and Position Control Budget, Exhibit E and Exhibit F.
All right. Have a motion to amend with Exhibit E and Exhibit, Exhibit F. Do we have a second? All in favor? Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. I think we had discussion on that.
I'd like to thank, by the way, Ms. Olin for catching these corrections and bringing them to us and letting us do this tonight before it became a total nightmare, you know? One or two months later.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And I know the fire service thanks you too. All right. Any more discussion on this budget? You guys good with the contingencies? All right. Are we done with that, Ms. Harley?
As far as all the motions that I'm aware of, yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. We had the discussion. Roll call to, um, approve the budget as amended. Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Hastings?
Aye.
Ms. Ackley?
Aye.
Mr. Holloway? Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. McCain?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Passed unanimously. Legislative Bill 20-21 passes. What's that?
It was a smooth budget.
I didn't hear you.
It was a smooth budget.
A smooth budget? I wouldn't go that far. Ms. Harley?
A Nexus Resolution Number 66-2021. This is to levy and impose a property tax for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022, to provide for the payment of a service charge for a property owner under a semi-annual payment schedule, setting the tax rates for real and personal property, and providing for the collection of the property tax.
All right. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number, Resolution Number 66-21.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second by Mr. McCain. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, Resolution Number 66-21, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, pass unanimously. Ms. Harley? Okay, Mr. Hitchens, you're up.
Good evening. I call your attention to Resolution 67-2021, accepting the audit report for the position classification system.
All right. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 67-2021.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second? I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Thank you. Any discussion?
I can give a quick overview.
Please do.
The classification system is maintained within the county's ERP software, Munis, between two modules, the job class master and, uh, position control. When a department needs to change a position, they make a request to HR. HR has a form that they use, which then, if that passes, goes on to the executive and finally the council for approval via legislative bill. Typically, this is done with the budget as it was just a few minutes ago. Last year, the approved budget had a caveat that council did not acknowledge the changes to the classification system. So, for this audit, I reviewed those changes and found that most of the tested positions followed the process through HR and the executive portion. The one position that wasn't documented has been removed from the classification system. I recommend that the prior changes be submitted through the proper protocol, which, again, is one of your amendments, uh, one of the exhibits that was done, as well as management provide the proposed changes through a separate schedule, which, again, was just done. Given the legislative bills that council passed through the, in, I believe it was October, that limit the changes that can happen with the position classification system, I rated the overall system as satisfactory. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Mr. Hitchens, thank you very much. All in favor of Resolution Number 67-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, pass unanimously. Thank you. This time, we're going to move to public comments. If there are any public comments, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. And any presented material may be submitted to the council members. Please include 10 copies. Derogatory remarks, personal attacks, obscene language, disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Thank you very much.
John Palmer, Delmar, Maryland. Originally came here tonight to support the teachers and the great job that they've done this year, and, uh, they deserve everything that they got. But I just noticed in the, uh, Resolution 66-2021 about the property taxes, where did it go up or did they go down? This is a good place where the people watch PAC 14, and this would be a great place to let the people know what it did do during that time. Just a suggestion. Another thing that I've noticed is, uh, on this West Side Park, I believe that was purchased around 2009 for a couple million dollars. And in the last 12 years, we've done absolutely nothing with it. We've built other ball fields, but on the west side, we've done absolutely nothing with it. So, me, in the way I think, I think something has happened between then and now. I think somebody has found another use for that piece of property. And only time will tell, but I believe somebody will offer a certain amount of money for that piece of property for a use, and then you all are going to have to vote on it. When you do, I hope you allow for something to have the ball fields or whatever they need over on the west side. And then sell it at a profit, not a loss. Thank you.
Thank you. More public comments? Yes, ma'am. Ladies first.
Mr. Dodd, I, I may have heard a false rumor, but, um, good evening.
Hi.
My name is Mary Humner, and I'm a retired librarian. I hold a master's degree in library science from the University of Maryland, and I've worked in a variety of libraries, from the hospital library when it was PGH, public library here. I was the director of the Laurel Library in Delaware. I've worked in the community college library and prison libraries. I know that libraries change lives. Libraries are a cornerstone of our society, and if we take funding away from them, our society starts to crumble. Our public library offers so many valuable services, which are needed by a population who cannot otherwise afford them. Computers in libraries help people find a wide variety of services, including job searches, health information, and housing, et cetera. There are children's services, genealogy information, books for adults, not only for pleasure reading, and by extension, book clubs, social activities that we all need. They're all, they're good for us. And also books with vital information on a wide variety of topics. The library also serves a population who is not able to come to the library via the Bookmobile. The community depends on these sources. Please do not take any funds from the library's budget. The library is a vital, vital part of this community. We, the citizens of Waicomico County, need the library to always be here for everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and just for the record, we already voted on the budget and nothing was taken from the library.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wrote this, I had to say it.
I know you did. You could have made a motion to strike something. Thank you.
My name is Richard Keenan. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the Waicomico Public Libraries. I was former chair of the Board of Trustees, and I'm currently the chairman of the Friends of the Library. I have very little to say. The previous speaker has taken most of my thunder, but I would like to, I would like to address a few things that I was concerned about. to address a few things that I was concerned about, and these concerns came to me from a number of people who were calling me, many of them active with the Friends. We've had over 200 people who are on our list, who have come for very, to work in various volunteer capacities, book sales, and if you remember, we did the Light of Literacy Breakfast for some four years and so on. So, these folks were very concerned, and I said I would come just to air a couple of these significant concerns. You've already addressed the budget. I thank you for not cutting it. I regret that it has not been increased, but that's something to discuss at another time altogether. The issue I was concerned about, and that many people were bringing to my attention, was this concern that during the COVID, during 2019 and 2020 particularly, starting in 2019, that the library was closed, that people were complaining that, you know, that why was the library not open? It was a taxpayer organization, so forth and so on. That's simply not true. The library was open from June 5th of 2020. Now, the question is, how do we define open? Well, we were consistent at the library with the mandates that were presented to us by Governor Hogan, and we followed those quite rigidly, as you might imagine, since a library is a place where many people would be moving in and out and so forth. So I'd like to just point out a few things about this. We opened doors in October of 2020, Pittsville on October 1st, the center on October 6th, and the, well, the Sarbanes branch, often known now also as the main branch, but it will be the Sarbanes branch, on October 13th. Now, due to the governor's restrictions on capacity limits, the library required appointments to come into the library. If a customer showed up and we were not at capacity, they are permitted to open, to come back at another time, make other appointments. We did not lose contact with them. November 20th through December 2nd, the center branch was shut down, and there were some concerns about this, due to an employee having COVID-19. The branch was cleaned, sterilized, closed for a limited time to protect the staff, while others working there were tested. Mr. Posoda was notified about the branch closure. On January 3rd, 2021, COVID rate of infection went over 10%. The library went back to books-to-go, which was where someone could go on the website, find a book. We would locate that book for them, or if we had it in the stacks, we would have it ready for them in paper bags for them to come to the loading dock and pick them up. On March 23rd, for example, passport services were resumed at the center branch, along with other services. I could go on and give you the other details, but I can just reassure you that we were very careful to make sure that the library provided all the service that it could to the public during that particular period of difficulty. On June 16th, we will look to starting our book sales again. Books, if anyone has any books they'd like to donate, and believe me, I have had a lot of people telling me they wanted to do that, to support the sales. On June 16th, we will begin accepting books again. The only other concerns that I would have is that the library, not to make a petition at this point, it's not appropriate about increases and so on, but the library has for some time been looking to develop a foundation, and we also want to enhance the presence of the Wycomico Public Libraries on the shore. I would invite you to, for example, if you are in Pittsville, to visit the library there. It is a sad little trailer that really cannot accommodate the people in Pittsville who have been asking us when we're going to do something, and this has been going on for a number of years. The library at the main center is kind of the functioning library, I think, for the county, and among the things that we do there, I'm sorry the education people aren't here, but they would agree that we are effective in our homework center, where we apply, we have the opportunity, present the opportunity for students to come and to get assistance with any homework difficulties they might have, in addition to whatever they might be getting through the school. Also, the job search program. This has been a very important factor. People who come to us who have no idea how to go into another phase of their life to prepare a resume, any of those things, we offer those opportunities. Many of you are aware that we also have, present citizens of Wycomico County with the opportunity to check out laptops and also to get instruction of that sort. Finally, in 2019, we commissioned a study by Beacon at Salisbury University. Beacon is an acronym for Business Economic and Community Outreach Network. They presented us with a lot of material, but I think if I had to pick one thing out of all of that, it is that they determined that for every dollar invested in public libraries, the eastern shore of Maryland, excuse me, realizes a total value of $5.40 for every dollar. That's a roughly 440% increase. Thank you very much for the opportunity to allow me to present these comments. Are there, if there are any questions, I would be glad to take them.
Do we have any more public comments?
John Hilton, President of Wycomico County Volunteer Fire Fighters Association, as well as President of Powell Voluntary Fire Company. I would like to take this time to thank you all for your support and the budget to help us continue protecting and serving the great community we have. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any more public comments?
I'm Audrey Orr. I live in Salisbury, actually Wycomico District 3, and I will be the incoming chair for the Wycomico County Libraries Board of Trustees effective the start of the new fiscal year.
Congratulations.
So, I won't, Richard did such a wonderful job. He took half my, half my material. I will just highlight a couple additional programs and just speak very briefly about the go-forward, fiscal year 22, 2022 going forward. Project REED is something that is a very valuable program, especially for people who have cognitive challenges and are entering the workforce for the first time. You may be aware that Maryland is an employment-first state that went in effect a couple of years ago, and these folks just are not prepared to work in the general work environment. Project REED, the bulk of the clients that come in to participate in Project REED are the people who have these cognitive challenges, and it equips them to go into the workplace. Legal services connections are made for people, being able to expunge minor blemishes on their record so they can work and get a job more readily. This is something that library does that most, many people are not aware of. Certainly during the month of June, we have 25 programs and events scheduled. Right now, still all virtual. By the middle of June, they will be looking at doing more and more in-person programs and in-person events as, as things evolve. One of the most important programs is our partnership concerning health literacy. Richard Minson, the Light of Literacy, where we highlighted that literacy a couple of years ago. It's a partnership with Title Health, with United Way of the La Roshn Shore, and the Wycomico County Health Department. The material ranges from cancer screenings to, if you're concerned, you have a teenager considered suicidal or is facing bullies, materials and resources for where to get help for that, discount cards for pharmacy needs, just about anything you might need from a health literacy standpoint, you can go to the library and obtain because of our partnership with these other agencies. You may be aware that during, let me think, it was from June through May, or into May, we had staff from the library going over to the health department once a week. There were five members of staff. They spent an eight-hour day, each one of them, on Mondays, because that's when the health department was getting the heaviest number of calls from people concerned about COVID. So, to help out with that call volume, the library staff went over there, like I say, for that, for that period. Starting in June through September, as needed, the library will be a cooling center, which is the first time that that's happened, and that will be going into effect this year at the Paul Sarbanes branch, downtown branch. We certainly will develop new programs as needed, based on the requests and the needs of the community, and we identify those needs by people coming to us and requesting something, but also by outreach. We meet regularly, staff meets regularly with a number of different agencies. They're a member of the Vulnerable Population Task Force, that I believe meets weekly, and they routinely meet with other organizations, including faith-based organizations, to identify what the community needs and how the library can help meet that need. Thank you for agreeing to meet the budget. I think we all ask what makes Wycomico a place where I want to live, and the not only quantitative measures that Richard mentioned, but the qualitative measures that the library can offer makes Wycomico a place I want to live. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more comments? Any more public comments? All right, moving on to council comments. Do we have council comments? Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Acting County Executive John Posoda and the Finance Director, Pam Olin, and the department heads for putting together the budget for this year, especially, you know, considering the challenges that we had with COVID and, you know, shortages of staffs, et cetera. But keep in mind, too, this was the Acting County Executive's first budget. It was also our finance director's first budget, so there was a lot to really take in, and, you know, you had to, you were hit the road running, as they say. So, I'd like to thank them for that. I'd also like to thank the staff, Mrs. Hurley, Ms. Sandy, and Mr. Hitchens for the great work that you did to make our job a whole lot easier in trying to figure out these, these numbers. So, that being said, I like, I think we've done a really great job here tonight with the, with the budget for this year. John, I wrote it down, the property tax went from .9286 to .9195. It's about .91. It's about one cent per $100 of assessed value.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Mr. Hastings?
I want to say ditto on that, and then, but also say, yeah, I, thank you very much for the, all the folks who worked on the budget. That was quite a process, and glad to get on to the next, next year. I did also say, the folks who sent a lot of emails on the libraries, you know, we do value the libraries. I just learned a little bit while sitting here about the passport services. I didn't know that was a thing, as well as some of the help literacy programs, and then donating books. I've, I've got a lot of books I can donate, none of which I read, they're my wife's, but nonetheless, just kidding, I read most of them. And, but last thing I'd say, actually, on an important note, tonight we did Resolution Resolution 59-20-21, that was the third item on the agenda, and that was declaring that SPY Development Group is eligible to receive the Maryland State Enterprise Zone benefits. I bring that up because this is unanimous vote. This is a moment where we, as a council, understand that these programs that we can put together can be helpful for facilitating greater economic growth in our area. Over the past, during the past legislative session in the state of Maryland, we approved enabling legislation that would allow us to create our own kind of program that could be helpful for greater downtown development, or, well, really, it's up to us as far as what we want to it. So, I would just say, as a whole, whether we touch on a Horizon program or anything that's been discussed so far, or create our new, our own program, I think it's vitally important that we, as a county, try to incentivize all that we can for, for, to make housing available, in this case, which could be downtown. We need housing available now in Wycomico County, and so, the more that we can create some sort of program, the sooner we can do that, now that we are through legislative session and we have the ability to do so, I think that would be helpful. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Ms. Hastings. Mr. Holloway, did you have?
I've got a couple things. First of all, Mr. Hastings, the Enterprise Zone tax credit is entirely different than what the legislators passed, give us the right to do. This is all, the Enterprise Zone legislation, we are reimbursed 50% from the state. It's not for housing, it's for, it's for businesses, so that's entirely different than what, what the other's going to be. In reference to the gentleman's comments about the library and Pittsfield Library, I want to go back and explain something. You're correct, we do need something different in Pittsfield. Citizens on that side of the county deserve something. The problem is, they missed a good chance to get something. A few years ago, the citizens around Pittsfield got activated and decided they wanted to try to find a place to have a library. I had phone calls, and it's no secret that Mr. Culver and myself didn't agree on a lot of things, but Mr. Culver got in touch with them. I went down there and looked at a building, Mr. Culver, Mr. Strausberg, Mr. Matthews, they went down, they had plans, they had agreements to rent a building, not for a permanent library now, but for a library that would last a few years until a library could, could be built. But for whatever reason, and I'm going to come to your next, or one of your meetings in June, and I'm, I'm going to hopefully get an answer, for whatever reason, that was flatly denied. So, I see in the capital improvement budget that there's money out there for a new library for the east side. That'll be years before that comes to fruition. That'll take a while. But the library, through their actions, for whoever's actions, I'm not going to blame it on any one person, but they missed a good chance because there was money allotted, that building could have been renovated, it had made a great library. It was one of the nicest buildings on the east side of the county, and it would have made a great building, next to the school. The landlord was willing to do anything he could do to get, get the people in there. And like I say, it wasn't going to be a permanent library. It was going to be a temporary. So, unfortunately, that's what the citizens have now, is what Mr. Keenan mentioned. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Davis, do you have anything?
Just to reiterate about the library, they, the gentleman stated about the, the budget, what was increased. Let me go back, a while back, the previous county executive cut the budget of the library. And if you look at it, the budget over the years, we're just now trying to get it back to where it was. I'm like, Joe, I mean, he's, he's, he wants the east side library, which we do need. Personally, we need to redo the library downtown. That library is old, so that's what we need to do, both of them. We needed it in, and my thing is, we need to start, as a county as a whole, start investing in our own county. We never promote our county and what we got. We always want to build things, but we don't promote what we have, and not only that, but encourage the thing, the businesses to stay, because, you know, look at some of these businesses closing down. We got business right here in this county. If we don't support and give them some help, they can pack up and leave, and this could be hard ache for the county, you know, but that's my thoughts.
All right. Any more council comments? Mr. McCain, are you still there?
A couple comments, Councilman Dodd.
Yes, sir.
The, like Mr. Cannon stated in the beginning of his comments, I do want to thank Executive John Posoda and Finance Director Pam Olin for their work on the budget. You know, that is the most complicated and time-consuming part of the, the job, and the same thing for the council. The council also has to put a lot of time in, so, you know, it's glad to see our budget get approved. One quick comment, when we were doing the Rising Star Award, I was unable to make the comment as to why Ms. Arms was selected, but she was selected out of about 15 candidates, and she had a message, I thought, that was very unique, and I just wanted to share, and her message was a message of grace. That's not something you hear a lot of times when you're talking about education, but her, her comments and her story as to why she was a candidate was, she offers grace, to grace to her students, grace to her colleagues, grace to the parents, and I just thought that was a very unique perspective, something that we all can share. So I just wanted to pass that on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCain. Do we have any more comments?
I have one.
Ms. Ackley?
I'm going to use this time to respond to some misinformation and accusations that have been directed at me this week. There has been an email circulated, and I would like to share the contents. Quote, Nicole Ackley is at it again. She is asking the county to strip the library of $1 million and give it to the sheriff's office. Nicole has bullied the library since we had a black executive director and event manager who worked to increase programming for LGBTQ youth and partnered with organizations like PFET Flag and the Phoenix Youth Project. There was a special meeting- There was a special meeting, and you will see Ackley ask about how much the county is required to give the library. Ackley will absolutely take advantage of the recent death of a police officer to promote her heinous agenda of cutting funding for the library and give it to law enforcement. Please show your support for the library, and for God's sakes, please vote this woman out of office. The next email was a response from a leader of a political party. Quote, Bill McCain told our Wednesday morning group about this. My reliable contacts indicate McCain, Hastings, Davis, and Cannon will vote against Ackley's proposed library funding cut, end quote. One statement in this email is true. I did ask how much the county funds the library. The answer is $529,000, and they are asking $1.5 million in 2022, which was approved this evening. That is a 200% increase. No other county department is receiving a 200% increase. Law enforcement, volunteer fire companies, not even our own public school system is receiving a 200% increase. The purpose of that budget work session was to discuss the rationale behind proposed changes. My job is to ask questions. That is why the people elected me here. During that meeting, Councilman McCain asked if I was proposing to cut the library funding. My response, quote, "No, I am not suggesting we cut the library funding," end of quote. To think my words were twisted to deceive and manipulate citizens is shameful. Even a local nonprofit has used their members to disseminate this blatant lie. The unfortunate truth is, the library is the one who is caught in this crossfire. If any citizens wish to discuss this further with me, my contact information's on the website, please feel free to do so.
Right, do we have everybody? All right, presidential comments. I too want to thank Mr. Posoda, Ms. Olend, Mr. Hitchens, and the entire council. It was a tough budget. Our main function is to approve a budget, and this was one of the toughest ones I've sat through. So, thank you, council members and everyone, for your work on that. The Charter Review Committee is meeting this Thursday in the council chambers. Due to the restrictions being lifted, they'll be meeting in the council chambers now at 5:00 PM. And I think it was five of us from the county council went to the Memorial Day service at the Civic Center yesterday. So, I want to thank everyone that attended that and honored our veterans that paid the ultimate sacrifice. And I've been following and trying my best to follow local sports. Salisbury University baseball won their regional championship the other day, and now they've made it to the Division III College World Series, and they'll be playing Friday night. So, let's make sure we root them on. Also, I'm a Buckeye, but I got to mention this, I follow Maryland baseball, too. One of our local students, Sean Fisher, it's his senior year. I thought he'd be done the other day for Senior Day, but they made it to the regional playoffs. So, let's root these local people on in these sports endeavors. So, thank you very much. All right, this time, need a motion and a second to adjourn from legislative session to go into the open work sessions, followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions article, Section 3-305, B1, 8, and 9, as follows. To discuss personnel matter pertaining to independent legal counsel, to protect the confidentiality of the individuals, and to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to the negotiations of human resource matters to protect the collective bargaining strategy. And finally, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation pertaining to the Lewis matter, and an amended shared facility agreement to protect the council's legal position. Need a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, moving on to the open work session. Do you want to take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Thank you, everyone that attended. We can reconvene in the Wycomico County Council, starting with the open work session. First up, we have a proposed program, Open Space Land Conversion from the West Metro Core Park to the Conley Mill property. Mr. Steve Miller, Director of Recreation Parks Tourism.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. Thank you for having me. I know this topic has already been a point of discussion here tonight, so, yes. But appreciate the opportunity. Mr. Dodd, with your permission, what I'd like to do is, in talking about this issue, maybe present three possible courses of action.
Sure.
In terms of, or for council consideration. The first option, and what we've believed to be the best option, is the full land conversion, which is what's been proposed to you and what's on the table. I understand, and I'll comment on the concerns brought forth, but we've presented that as the best option for two primary reasons. Number one, we believe as far as the county as a whole, the Conley Mill property has a greater opportunity for recreation value. And a program open space land restriction is forever when it's an acquisition. And we have felt like that if you're going to be restricted forever, it makes sense to be restricted where you have a greater opportunity and greater recreation opportunity for the residents. The second primary reason is that the full conversion would give the county the most flexibility and the most options. And again, I always think that that would be a good thing. And to be clear, convert, or moving the restriction from one property to the other leaves every option on the table for the county, and that includes building a park. There would be nothing that would stop us from applying for Program Open Space or building a park. All that's been proposed is simply moving a restriction from one property to the other, which gives us options. So, that's why this has been proposed. We feel like this is in the best interest of the county, the state of Maryland, the three secretaries signed off and concurred with that assessment. And I do believe, and I can get into it if you're interested, but I do believe the residents of the county have an interest in restricting Conley Mill for future recreation. So, and I'd be happy to talk in more detail. But that's the first path, and you've heard about that, and that's kind of what's been on the table. A second option, which I think could be a very good option, is what's called a partial land conversion. And essentially, what that would do is it would move part of the restriction from one to the other, and it would leave a portion of the West Metro property restricted under Program Open Space, which would guarantee a park in the future. If the council were to opt for that type of a path, what I would highly recommend is to keep 10, somewhere between 10 and 15 acres as restricted at Levin de Shiel. And I'll give you, just for reference, Winter Place Park, which is a very good-sized park, multiple courts, multiple ballfields, pavilion, restroom, et cetera, that's about 15 acres. Billy Jean Jackson Park, which is another nice park with several different amenities, that's about 11 acres. Mason Dixon is about 13 acres. So, you can build a nice, a nice-sized park between that 10 and 15-acre range. And so, in theory, that is-
What are, for the record, what is the total acreage?
It's about 100 at Levin de Shiel.
It's about 100.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, the benefits of doing a partial conversion is you would move both projects forward simultaneously. Conley Mill would be restricted, you would move that forward. The West Metro would have, let's just say, 15 acres as restricted. That would then have a path forward. You would have money in hand to develop a master plan at both sites, which we would do over the course of the next year. And you would still maintain flexibility at the West Metro Core. And I think that would be the key part. Again, I'm just throwing out a number, but if you were to keep 15 acres restricted, you would have the flexibility with those remaining 85 acres. You could farm it, and the money could help support the park, the maintenance of the park. You could still build a bigger park, doesn't limit you to 15 acres. You could still build a 50-acre park if you wanted to, if there was a need. You would have options there, and that would move potentially both projects in a forward path. So, I think that could be a very good option for the county and for the residents. The third option, which in my personal opinion, I think would be the least beneficial, is to throw out the conversion altogether. What that would do, essentially, that's the status quo. What that would do is leave us in a place where Conley Mill doesn't move forward at all, there's no restriction at Conley Mill, there would be no forward movement at Conley Mill. And again, I think we would, in the interest of trying to advance the West Metro, which again, I'm not against that, I mean, I'm in the park business, so we are pro-park, and we want to see as many parks as possible. But in the interest of advancing that, I think we would, in many ways, restrict ourselves by having 100 acres when we may not need that. So, I do think the status quo, I think, would be the least beneficial to the residents, in my professional opinion. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions or dive in further into any of those options. But those are three, I think, paths that we could take with respect to this.
Mr. Holloway?
Take Levin de Shiel Road right off of it right now, and so we're dealing with Conley Mill. Just forget we have that for a moment. What's holding up from applying for open space funds for Conley Mill, or what's keeping us from developing Conley Mill? You know, just say we didn't have Levin de Shields.
You could, right now, we could apply for grant funds at Conley Mill.
So, why don't we do that? What keeps us from doing that?
I think right now, we're not ready at this point in time. We need a plan, a master plan there at both sites. So, you wouldn't apply for development funds until you know what you're going to do. So, I think we're a ways away on both projects from applying for development funds.
Why do a conversion if you're not ready to do anything anyway? Does that speed things along?
It could, it could. The conversion, the conversion, again, it's a forever restriction, and you have 235 acres, and what we would restrict is about 185 acres at Conley Mill. But you would be restricted forever, and the state has agreed, we've assessed it and looked at it, we think Conley Mill, long-term, has the greater recreation potential. And so, to restrict yourself where there's the greater potential makes sense. And also, at the West Metro, by giving yourself more flexibility, right now, we have none, by giving yourself more flexibility, you could actually open the door faster to develop a park than what you have right now.
Well, I hate, you know, I hate to say this, but this restricting forever, that's kind of what we were told when we bought Levin de Shields with open space money, that it would be restricted forever when we use those monies. But you're saying we can convert it. So, you know, we could convert this to Conley Mill in 10 years, if nothing happens, we could convert it from Conley Mill to somewhere else. So, that thing about being restricted forever is not correct.
Well, technically, yes, you're right. But I will tell you that a conversion process is a very difficult process. It's a process that the state does not encourage. And it took over two years to get to this point, to get this conversion looked at, approved, and signed off on. So, it doesn't just flip-flop back and forth, it is a very difficult process for that to happen.
What you said is, if we converted this, did the conversion to Conley Mill, that it would be parkland forever, right? It would-
With the exception of a conversion.
Kind of what we were told when we bought Levin de Shiel, was the same thing. So, it doesn't, you know, that doesn't, I guess it doesn't hold orders, is a good way to put it.
Okay.
Steve, I'm just, I'm wondering why we can't just apply for a separate program open space for Conley Mill, just leaving Levin de Shiel completely out of it and just doing a completely separate one for Conley Mill.
Again, you could do that. You could apply for development funds when the time comes, if we decide Conley Mill's going to be a park, which I certainly hope that would be the case. So, we could do that. But again, I think if you're looking, if you're looking at the West Metro as a future park, which again, I'm not opposed to that, you have to ask the question, do you need a 100-acre park? Can we afford a 100-acre park? Can we maintain a 100-acre park? We're building a 100-acre park at Pirate's Wharf right down the road. If you don't need that, and we need to determine what do we need and what do the residents want, you give yourself a lot more flexibility by not being restricted on 100 acres.
So, if we keep the partial designation and we sell the rest of the land, farm it, whatever we do, would those funds then be used for West Metro, or would they be used for Conley Mill?
No, they'd be at West Metro.
Okay.
Yeah, and what you noted in the CIP, that was written some time ago, is a partial conversion, whether we farm leased, whatever you did, they would be dedicated at Levin de Shiel.
Pirate's Wharf isn't right down the road, it's way down the road.
Well, a little.
It's a different kind of park, right?
Yeah, it is.
I mean, you know, it's going to be, you're not having playing fields there, correct?
At Pirate's Wharf?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so it's a different, it's a different kind of park, so.
Steve, I'm looking at some figures here, and I hate math. You said that we could use 10 to 15 acres and make that a park out of the 100 acres. So, you want to convert that program open space to give up 185 acres at Conley Mill?
So, what you would do is you would-
You said restrict 185 acres at Conley Mill.
Yeah, so what you would do is you'd be removing the restriction from 85, lifting that off, and moving that restriction over to Conley Mill.
Right.
So, you'd have two restrictions at that point. You'd have 15 acres at West Metro, which would be restricted to be a park, and then Conley Mill would be restricted.
185, is what you said.
Correct.
Doesn't seem like it's fair and balanced.
That's one of the requirements, there's three requirements for a conversion to be approved. One of the requirements is it has to be a greater acreage. So, whether it's greater by 100 or by 85, it's still-
And then you said the conversion took about two years, and I could have sworn, two years ago, we received that property as a donation for a tax write-off.
Yeah, I believe it was the beginning of 2019.
So, we were told that that property was going to be used for the landfill, and not, there was no plans discussed about converting it to restricted land.
Yeah, so, that topic actually came up in 2018 at a work session when the Conley Mill was being debated. And at the time, you know, again, the council was trying to consider whether or not to accept the property. And so, there were a number of options that were kicked around.
Right, but I don't recall it being brought to our attention about converting the West Metro Core to, or West Metro Levin de Shiel to Conley Mill. I thought Conley Mill was going to be used strictly for landfill coverage.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was a part of that discussion.
Do you remember that, Mr.?
Oh, yeah. I remember that.
Yeah, it was a discussion at the time, and what we had agreed to do was to pursue with the state, if that could be an option, to convert. So, we've done that, and the state's approved it. And what we've also done is, we've carved out of the 235 acres at Conley Mill, we've carved out about 50 acres that Public Works is using, so that would not be restricted.
That wouldn't be affected.
Correct. And that would give us the flex, again, it's trying to give the county flexibility, but it would give the county flexibility that that could be part of the park, or it could not.
So, you're saying 50 acres is for the park?
No. So, what we've done, what we're proposing is to restrict 185 acres at Conley Mill. The remaining 50 are the, is what Public Works is digging for dirt. And so, that would not be restricted at all.
So, Mr. Whitelock, these 50 acres, how many years you got digging dirt out of there?
We planned on-
He's like-
I'd have to ask. Are the 50 acres just the palm coverage now that we have?
Yeah, roughly.
So, we can figure that will probably take us 10 years to dig that out.
Now, originally, that Conley Mill property was supposed to last us 20 to 25 years for dirt, for the landfill. So, now you're cutting it down to 10.
I never said 20 and 25.
No, the previous director and administrator, who are engineers, and did a study and said that. So, now we're cutting it in half to build a park. So, in 10 years, you're not going to be here, I'm not going to be here.
Probably not going to be here.
Another year. But they're going to go after the Potts property again. My problem is, with this park.
Even if we dug all that out, you know, we look at Conley Mill, and it is free dirt, and it's good dirt. The cost of removing that dirt and bringing it to landfill has a significant price tag to it, too, at a time when saw waste is struggling financially in itself. So, I mean, if, basically what I do, or is I sit here and give you options- in itself. So, I mean, if, basically what I do, Ernie, is I sit here and give you options. I give you the best information that I have in front of me, so you can make the best decisions you can. However you guys want to do that, it's completely up to you. I'm not, you know, when they asked me how long it would take me to dig those two ponds out, I told them it would take me 10 years to dig those two ponds out. What they come and tell you is what they come and tell you.
We were understanding when we took the property, that it was 20 years of dirt, free dirt.
That told me it'd take me 10 years.
Now, it's going to take 10 years.
Yeah.
Take 10 years to dig the holes that he's planning on digging. If it wasn't made into a park, it might take 50 years to dig.
That's what I'm saying. They're cutting it, the property down.
You're going to get to a point in there, too, you're going to get into wetland restrictions, and they're not that far away from where you are right now. If you were to go further back in there, what you see is the topography of that property is actually very interesting. It falls off into a creek bed really hard, and you're going to get into some environmental impact things that you're not going to be able to do a lot of what you think you could anyway.
But would it propose in this property to be a park? That's not wetlands, is it?
No, it would, actually, that was, where that drops down, the front section, I believe it was proposed to be a campsite type.
That's to be determined.
To be determined. The usable property on that is not as large as the two holes that are currently there, or it doesn't appear to be, to be. Or maybe it's equal to, so maybe it's one to one. Once you get past that, you're getting into that transition where you're more or less, the best you can hope for probably is to make transition into Henry S. Parker, because the environmental impacts of things down in that, that stream bed are going to be tough.
Mr. Cannon?
Kind of like what we're looking here is that Weston Young, who was a prior Public Works Director, and then the acting county administrator, assistant administrator, did an excellent job in convincing this council right here that Conley Mill, and I mean, he did an excellent job, that Conley Mill was needed by the county for fill dirt for the landfill.
And he was correct.
Yeah, so we bought into that 100%. So we're still, you know, on that same, we're still on that same premise.
I have five acres in my own pit, and I have nine years over there. You add those two things together, they still don't carry the landfill with as expansion where it needs to go. What he told you was not wrong. He told you right. The landfill is going to have a dirt deficit at some point in time.
Steve, how many acres is Henry Parker?
It's about 40.
About 40 acres.
A little more than 40.
40 acres.
Yeah.
I think just as we followed the advice of prior administrators, you know, when Gary came in here and he talked about wanting to get the West Metro Core, we took their advice. It's not always good to micromanage everything. I'm inclined to appreciate what you're offering, too. And I think the 85-15 sounds like a pretty good compromise. Do we have a buyer? I'm assuming part of this whole plan means there would be a buyer for the West Side Metro Core?
No, not necessarily. That's not determined whether or not you'd even sell part of that. Like I said, I think that could be decided at a future date. To me, I think a logical approach to this would be if you restrict the 15 acres, the next thing would be, let's figure out what we want to do at the property. So let's go through a process. Maybe you want to build a 15-acre park, maybe you want to build a 20-acre park. So I wouldn't really consider selling or doing until you decide what you want to do. But then, at that point, you could, you could decide to sell a portion, you could decide to lease it, you could decide to build a park, I think.
But your master plan doesn't, doesn't say get rid of the 85, get rid of the 85 acres. It just says, release the program open space restriction and transfer it.
Correct.
So we'll still have the full West Metro Core if you want to take 15 acres, if you want to use the whole 100.
Correct.
All we're doing is releasing the restriction.
Correct.
That's harmless.
Correct, and-
Can I ask a question, just because I'm curious?
Go ahead.
What does, I'm asking for a friend.
I'm kidding.
What does the restriction get you beyond what you can get without it?
What it got us was the money to buy the property.
We don't need another property.
Levin de Shiel.
Levin de Shiel.
Levin de Shiel.
So it had to be restricted to purchase?
We took state funds. That's what initiated the initial restriction.
So you're transferring that money?
Not the money, but yes, in the state's eyes, yes.
In the state's eyes.
Yes.
So, again, back to this athlete, you don't have-
Mr. Holloway.
You don't have a master plan for Conley Mill. You don't have a master plan for West Metro. He spent two years trying to do this conversion. I guess my outline question would be, why didn't you also, in those two years period, try to apply for open space grants for Conley Mill? You could have done both. You didn't have to do just one. You could have done both. And we wouldn't be sitting here tonight having this discussion.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of it depended upon what the council would decide to do with this, because if you're staying on Levin de Shiel, or you're moving on from Levin de Shiel, whatever happens, that would impact it one way or the other. So I think we needed to see this process play itself out.
We could have done either one. You could have done both at the same time. There's something that we don't know here, and you say it's not for sale. What I'm hearing on the street is, hey, this property's going to be sold in the future. When are they going to do it? You know, I mean, I'm out there. So I hear things, and maybe they're not all true, but questions are asked and accusations are made.
Understood.
So.
We'd still have to surplus it.
Right.
We would have to surplus it if it were to be sold.
Well, I understand that.
It'd be a lot easier to surplus when we release the program open space restrictions, and I have a hard time-
Still have the control over that. The council would still have the control over that sale.
Just for clarification, you're not suggesting that we're being deceptive here, that we're, that we have a buyer?
No, I'm just saying what I'm hearing, John. Okay. But what I'm saying, I'm not accusing you of anything.
Okay.
Okay.
I was just clarifying.
If I was, I would.
I understood. I was just clarifying, because that's kind of what I heard.
But what, this is, what baffles me most about this is the sudden need to get rid of the West Metro Core Park. I mean, that's baffling to me. As important as it was, as important as it could be at some point in time, and I understand when you're saying the 15-85, but you could have done the legwork to try to get open space money for Conley Mill at the same period, in the same past two years, and we wouldn't have to be here to discuss this. It doesn't make sense to me why this hasn't been approached in a different manner.
That's fair enough. And again, I just want to clarify that whether we convert or not, but if we do convert, it doesn't get rid of the West Metro. It just removes a restriction.
Right. Mr. Miller, we still have a busy schedule ahead of us. Can you work on that and then come back to another work session?
I think, yeah, I'd be happy to. I think what would be very helpful, because if we decided to go the route of a partial conversion, what we would need to do is reinitiate with the state their process to approve a conversion like that. I think what would be helpful, if that's the will of the council, I'd be happy to do that and start that process. That could take several months. If there's not interest, we'd be kind of in a holding pattern, so I would need to kind of get your direction as to how to proceed.
Personally, I'm not interested in that. I'd rather keep the West Metro Core the way it is, and then apply for the program open space for Conley Mill. I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the council.
That's kind of the way I look at it, you know. I mean, I don't understand why it wasn't done to begin with, so.
Well, you could transfer the entire, I mean, as the original request, you could transfer the entire acreage over to Conley Mill, and you could build a park at West Side next week. It doesn't keep the county from building a park there. It doesn't get rid of that land. The land will still be there. It just changed it.
Restriction off, John.
Let me finish, please. Let me finish.
It makes it easier to sell.
Let me, you can make all those assumptions you want, but the reality is, what they've said today, and what Mr. Posoda has again reiterated, there's not a plan to sell it. They just want to remove the restrictions. They could make it a park next week, but just transfer the restrictions to Conley Mill, so they can do more with Conley Mill with the help of the state of Maryland. So I think the real issue here is whether or not the council as a body wants to see Conley Mill restricted. That's, to me, the real argument.
Let me ask this question. When you make that, if we make the conversion, what kind of funds come from the state when we make that conversion?
None.
So.
Well, then I misstated that part. But, Joe, I don't need to be tricking.
No, it's not a trick question, John.
Yes.
You're saying they needed to make the conversion to build a park, but they're not going to get any money to build a park.
All right, well, let's not, let's not get off track either. It does not impact the West Metro Core, which is what seems to be the concern here. It will not impact the West Metro Core at all. So why don't we refocus on what we really want to see happening at Conley Mill? Do you want to see it restricted? Is there more land that we want to keep at Conley Mill for the landfill or not? Or do we only want to restrict half of the Conley Mill? That's what we really have to, I think, evaluate here.
Yeah, if I can add, if I can add one thing to that. So money doesn't come with it. However, I will say that the farm lease monies that have been collected over the years, that has to go with the restriction. So if we did a partial conversion, what you would have is enough money at each property to do a master plan without having to come back to the council for additional money. So we could, though it's not new money, it would free us up to use that farm lease money to develop a plan at both sites.
So- John, we could put a restriction on Conley Mill with open space money if it was applied for, but it's never been applied for.
I'm afraid that's going, I'm afraid what Steve's probably saying is probably about another two years down the road, if we have to reinitiate a whole new open space program just for Conley Mill.
Yeah, and I'll also say this about open space. Open space is, for recreation parks, we have a lot of projects going. We have a lot of ambitious projects. We've accomplished a lot, and we're continuing to accomplish a lot. Open space is our primary capital funding mechanism, and the amount of projects and the cost of what we have in the pipeline versus what we get in open space, we're programming out three, four, or five years. So open space is not an endless pit where we can just go in and develop all of our parks. It is a long process, and we try to prioritize every year and to take full advantage of what we do get from the state, but, anyway.
Steve, I have to add a question about the program open space designation. So say we're going to split these two. So Conley Mill's going to have its own, West Metro will have its own. Can you then make the West Metro restrictions smaller, so that you can still keep program open space there with 15 acres, but then if we choose to sell, farm, whatever, with the rest of that? Can you do that? Can you convert it and just make it smaller?
If I understand you, that's what that partial conversion would be.
Okay, and so that's separate from Conley Mill?
Correct, but-
So is Conley Mill could have its own separate conversion?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, if I'm understanding your question correctly, yes, the partial conversion would restrict Conley Mill. It would leave a portion at West Metro restricted. The rest of it would be-
We just can't modify the West Metro restriction, like not converting it to Conley Mill, just-
Yes, you can't shrink it, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I think all Steve was saying is that-
It'd have to be a partial conversion.
By doing that, he's just protecting both pieces, if that's the plan.
I think, I mean, I think-
It's a protection for both pieces for future parks.
Also, to keep in mind that the, when the partial restriction is lifted, a partial amount of those funds can go towards each part to develop a master plan. So I believe that that is the incentive for the, ask for the restriction. As Steve said, it's not an endless pot of project open space money. He's got this in the pipeline. What should have, and whatever, years ago, this is just something that we felt as, you know, we can release some of this money and use it to move forward like he has done at Pirate's Wharf. Take a little bit of money and leverage that to increase the possibility and probability of Conley Mill. Correct?
Correct.
Has there ever been any core samples done on Levin de Shiel, see if you could dig dirt there?
[laughing]
Hey, you need dirt, you need it close.
No, I can't drive an off-road truck over there, though.
Don't have what at Conley Mill.
No, what I do have, I'm at the landfill.
What's so laughable about that, Mark?
I thought was a good question.
It is a good question. What I'm trying to get away from is-
You'd be half, you'd be two or three miles closer.
When I look at landfill operations, no matter which way I look at this, if I'm getting dirt from another location, I'm handling that dirt twice. I'm bringing it to landfill, I'm putting it in a pile, then I'm reloading it on off-road trucks, and I'm moving it again. My sole goal in doing anything with dirt, and one is to make sure there's enough, the other is to reduce the cost of hauling that dirt as much as possible to reserve the cash that solid waste has, so we can build new cells and go into the, you know, and unfortunately, and I don't want to bring this up, but it was you who didn't want to raise the fees, which I need to continue landfill operations. So if you're, you know, and I'm not going to bring you anything next year, but if-
Are you going to be here next year?
I might be. I might be. So, you know, I'm just trying to have, you know, I had a conversation with someone a while ago, and a lot of people, I don't believe, think that, you know, they don't understand that solid waste is an enterprise fund. They don't understand what an enterprise fund is. And that's something I think is most valuable to most people that don't know, because you never, you hear it all the time. You know, I pay your salary. No, you don't. The landfill pays that salary. But regardless of, it doesn't matter if solid waste is a, an enterprise fund, a pure enterprise fund. When it runs out of money, the taxpayers of Y Combe County, regardless of increasing fees, are going to pay the bill. You have to do something with the trash. Trash costs money. Taking care of trash costs money. There may be something down the road we can look at, but today, this is what we have in front of us.
Taxpayers are already paying the bill, Mark.
Well, it's user fees. Fees, taxes, I don't care which way you look at it, but somebody's going to pay the bill.
We need to move on. But you, I'm going to get to your point. You said you didn't want to dig at Levin de Shiel Road, which is closer, and you don't want to dig at Naylor Mills, so we're going to have to build a property closer.
Now, I got a Plan B for you, Ernie, over there. I like Ernie, he's all right.
Everybody likes him. All right, we've got to move on. How's the council feel?
What about a master plan?
I think that the second option that you gave us, the partial conversion, that sounds, that seems to be the most palatable. I think we need to, I would like to digest it, reach out to the citizens in that area and get what-
I'm not-
What your feelings are on it.
I'm personally not comfortable with that. I'd rather see a master plan and you tell us what you're working on. I'd rather do another work session. Maybe it'd be more palatable for me back then, or then the next time you show up, and maybe with the rest of the council, because I don't know that they're very comfortable with it either.
If we do another work session, it might be good to have clarity as far as timing. You mentioned with option B, that you might, or two, that you might have to go back to the state folks for program open space and renegotiate or rework how long that would take. Those kind of questions would be important.
Yeah, I've asked that question. They said it's actually not been done, so they don't know. So they estimated several months, so.
I trust you'll get an answer from them.
Yeah, so I'm fine. I mean, yeah.
Other question, why not just apply for open space funds for-
Why not just apply for open space funds for Conley Mill? You've, you know, you've never, I keep asking that question, and you keep saying, well, it'll take time, it'll take time. Well, you're saying this is going to take time. You said this took two years.
I think you said there wasn't an endless pot of money with project open space.
Correct.
Yeah. I think the partial, I think the partial's a good idea, to try to work on the partial, and that way, at least you'll transfer some of the funding to, because you said you wanted to be able to transfer the funding to Conley Mill for, to make a master plan, right?
Correct. That would be one of the benefits of doing the partial, is that you could then split that farm lease money to do a plan at both properties. And so in a year from now, we would have a much better idea of where we want to go specifically with both of those parks. So I think that is a very good option, because it does advance the ball on both.
And it all comes back to the one question of, how sustainable are we going to be at the landfill with filter if we make this change? What is this restriction? How is this restriction going to impact us at the landfill? Bottom line.
Bottom line is you wouldn't have enough dirt either way.
Well, still, we picked it up for a reason. Again, we picked it up for a reason. You said we got 10 years of what we had here.
Ten years there, yeah. Five years there, so that's 15 years, looking into approximately 40 to 45-year lifespan of the landfill on its current footprint.
So, Mr. Miller, when you're ready to come back for another work session, please let us know.
Will do.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, next on the agenda, and we need to do it really quick because we have people waiting, the process for selecting a redistricting commission.
I can jump on that real quick.
Okay. Mr. Hastings wants to lead this.
I put this, what's in the packets, I put this together after we'd had the conversation. So this was a couple of months ago and I haven't really looked at it too much since then, but what I said that I would do was to come back to the council and model a program after the governor's, the way the governor's processed. The governor put together a process for three Democrats, three Republicans, three unaffiliated or independent. So, and then some multiple other members. So I'm suggesting that, I put up together a draft plan of Wyomaco, independent redistricting commission, something there, it could be, where it could be a nine-member commission. And then that, I tried to think of the best way to do that, to choose who could be on there, and the least extreme voices would be to go through a process better than what we did to select the charter review committee, but a ranked choice process where we go through, we have, we open it up to public applications, and then each one of us chooses our top three candidates. And we just put them in order. And then whoever gets the highest score, they're the top three, then they're the three for Republicans, independents, and Democrats. And then, and if there were, I even put into the piece there, I even put if there was a tie, if somehow do we get a tie, what would be a way to break that tie in a fair manner? I also stuck in there the process of how we'd go about, including the process from reaching out to Ms. Early, opening up just like we did with the charter review committee or commission. And then, yeah, so the only other, I guess the thoughts on my end, the other questions would be, of course, making sure that we, hopefully we have a diverse group of folks there, but how do we select a committee chair? Or is that, or how does that group, does that group select a committee chair? Which most likely, we might not want to have a hand in that, be hands-off, just like we did the charter review committee. And then, and then the question, the obvious thing, other question would be, what does this group produce? Does this group work with planning zoning to produce one map or three maps or something along the line? Because ultimately, it's got to come back to the county council for approval.
For approval, right.
So my thought was that, and I put in here as some, I mean, what I wrote in here was that maybe it would be helpful for a super majority or at least a, if you had nine members, let's aim to have one map produced with seven members approving it, you know? And if they couldn't reach that, if they failed to reach that, then they could reach, then they go to produce three maps that we could then come back to us. But, so that's the way I wrote it out. This is, this is put together, this follows the call from Governor Hogan to create one, to create independent redistrict committees for the state of Maryland, for the federal government as well as the state government and then all of the counties. So I would love for us personally to really set the tone of having a truly independent commission. I tried to write this as the way that could be the most independent process and the governor's process already did a pretty good job of that. So that's what it's modeled after.
Ms. Right, Ms. Holloway, do you have a comment?
No, no, I have a question. What was this, I guess this would be the third redistricting I've been familiar with. I was on the council for the last one. What was the problem with doing it the way we did do it?
We could do it a number of ways. One would be if each one of us, I don't think, I can't, I think that's how it happened last time, is that, you know, each one of us could choose a person. Theoretically, then you're going to have a majority Republican, just like you, a group of this commission would be a majority Republican. So that's why we figured we'll go three, three, and three. If you want to look at another statistic, I pulled up the latest on what's for voter registration. Currently, if you had a nine-member commission, there are more registered Democrats in Wyomaco County than there are Republicans. In that case, if you had a nine-member commission, it'd be four Democrats, three Republicans, and two independents. I figured let's just sidestep all of that and just have three, just keep it three, three, and three, and then just, and then invite folks who are truly knowledgeable when it comes to understand data and understand, you know, that are involved with the community. That could be a good group, that could produce a map.
I can tell you this much, when I chose my people for the charter review committee, I didn't ask them if they were Republican or Democrat, and to this day, I don't know what they are. I really didn't care.
I think for this process being such an intentionally partisan process, it'd be good, I mean, let's start with putting that out there. If someone wants to apply, then they have to go through that process to say, yeah, here's what my political affiliation is. And, I mean, we could go further.
Councilman Dodd, I'd like to weigh in.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. McCain.
You know, Councilman Hastings has obviously put a lot of thought into this. I mean, I like it, you know, but I reviewed this, I mean, I liked it for several reasons. I mean, after reviewing it and trying just to think of any way to make it better, et cetera, it's, I mean, you can't come up with a more fair process. So I mean, it's very independent, it's very fair. And in the day, I'd say we're basically doing the same thing that the governor is doing in the state of Maryland, you know, just doing this at the county level. So, you know, I think for the public purposes, because, you know, redistricting can be very political, I think we're serving our public well by doing something that's very independent, very fair, and we all get a say in it. So I think it's, you know, I like it, you know? I mean, I think we, you know, I just like to see us file certainly something very, 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 very close to what's been proposed.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCain. Ms. Holloway?
It don't make any difference to me, but what Mr. Hastings is forgetting, that the citizens did elect four Republicans, you know, and three Democrats. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, I've asked a couple of people if they're interested in it, and I think one of them's a Republican and I think another one's a Democrat, so it don't, you know, but it just seems to me that there's always somebody trying to fix something that isn't broken. And we did real well the last two times we selected, the last time, anyway, we selected a redistricting committee. So anyway, there's not much need to argue about it. There's, might not even be doing redistricting though.
Mr. Davis?
Census hadn't got their ducks in a row yet, so...
Well, the last redistricting, I was getting ready to run, and mind you, I'm in a, I am a minority district, but the committee decided to come down my street and take me out of District One and put me in a district with you.
Well, I mean, okay, I'd love to, brother.
No, we ran against each other.
I think we had gotten along good.
How are we going to get along when we're in the same district, got to run against you? But, you know, it just shows that it needs to be fair. And I think that's a good point with three, three, and three.
That's fair, it worked out, they changed it, right?
Not by what was proposed. Luckily, a person that was on there saw what they had done to get me out of the minority district, to put me out there with you, so I couldn't run in my district where I live.
Was that done intentionally, you think, or just happened? I mean, I don't know.
They came down and took one street, West Road, one end of West Road in Atkins, and put it in your district.
Well, they had to come down some road. I mean, I'm just asking if you think it was intentional.
Yeah, they just took that one street, they just took West Road, and you got all the other streets that it didn't touch.
But they didn't know that Ernie Davis was going to run.
Yeah, come on, Larry.
Did they?
It was only between Atkins Road and Law Cabin. Come on now.
Had you already filed to run? I don't know, I'm asking.
This was the first time I ran, not now. This was when I first ran.
I didn't know you ran the first time.
How'd I get elected?
I didn't pay attention to everybody running? All right, any more discussion on this?
I have a comment.
Yes, please.
You put a lot of effort into it, I really appreciate you doing this.
Can you talk into the mic?
I appreciate you doing this. I just want to share, at the charter review committee, a former council member said that if they had to appoint someone of the opposite party, they would appoint the worst person. And I'm not saying that we're doing this here, but I think that three Republicans, three Democrats, and whatever it is, one independent.
Three independents.
Three independents. That party needs to select them.
And I'll respond to, the reason why we put it as a, that I intentionally wrote it as a ranked choice voting, I'm going to be very clear, I know a lot of nutty Democrats that live in Wyomaco County. I also know plenty of folks that are, you know, on the other partisan divide, who are not so well-connected. It'd be nice if this process by, and I say, what we did with the previous situation was kind of a sloppy ranked choice voting, right? No, this would be a situation where we all come in at one time and say, here's who we're thinking. The reason why we do that is that it'll then eliminate the hyper-partisans on each side and you just get people who want to be there, who want to have an independent process. So, I mean, we could all think of somebody who could be hyper-partisan. I don't want, I don't think we as a body or the public as a whole wants those folks to be able to, getting in the way. We don't, we need less partisanship, not more. So this process intentionally written for a three, three, and three, and, you know, that allows then anybody who might be on one particular viewpoint to then nix a person who could be hyper-partisan.
Mr. Holloway? All right, any more comments? All right, where do we want to go from here? We're running out of time.
Wait and see what the census comes up with. We might not even have to go through this.
We do have to go through the process, and the latest is that the census, the folks did announce, we will have had, we'll have data in hand by September 15th. They're now expecting it, it'll be in hand by August. So if we start, we'll have to have the process, probably have folks together at least a month before to know how, how the process should go, what to think, to think through things before they get data in hand, so...
So you're saying we need to have it ready by July?
Yeah, correct.
So what do you want to do about making a notice for applicants?
Can we put a notice out there to get applicants and see how many we get? I mean, because this is going to be a pretty condensed, intense committee, correct?
I think it will be.
Mr. Wilbur, is this a pretty time-consuming committee?
Yes, we need, we need to have our map, say, by December, in December.
So we need to have it by December?